All set? Okay, at this time it's 6:34 PM on October 21st, 2020, Wednesday. I'd like to call into session the North Row South Row Regional School Committee Open Meeting. Pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12th, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, general law, chapter 30A, section 18, and the Governor's March 15th, 2020 order imposing strict limitation on the number of people that may gather one place, this meeting of the North Row South Row Regional School Committee will be conducted via remote participation to the greatest extent possible. Specific information, the general guidelines for remote participation by members of the public and/or parties with a right and/or requirement to attend this meeting can be found on the district website at the posted URL. For this meeting, members of the public who wish to listen or watch the meeting may do so in the following manner. NCAT, Educational Channel, Verizon Channel 29, Charter Channel 194, or SAM Government Channel, Verizon Channel 37, Charter Channel 192. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings in real time via technological means. In the event that we are unable to do so, despite best efforts, we will post on the district website an audio or video recording transcript or other comprehensive record of proceedings as soon as possible after the meeting. We have a revised agenda, and the first thing that we have on here, which is one of the greatest things that we usually do at this time, and it would be a different format tonight, is the recognition of National Merit Scholars. Before I turn it over to Greg and to Principal of Algonquin Regional High School, Mr. Sean Bevan, I'd just like to give a little background on what the National Merit Scholarship Program is. It's an academic competition for recognition and scholarships that began in 1955. High school students enter the National Merit Scholarship Program by taking the PSAT test, which is the preliminary SAT National Merit Scholarship Qualifying Test, which serves as initial screenings of program entrance. Approximately 1.5 million high school students take the PSAT each year, and 3.3% are commended scholars and 1.1% are National Merit Scholar semifinalists. Tonight, we are honoring four semifinalists, which comprise the 1.1% of the total population taking the test, and we have 18 commended students, which represents the 3.3% in the 2021 National Merit Program. And I'd like to now turn it over to Superintendent Martino and Principal Bevan.
So thank you, Chairperson Frank. As the Chairperson mentioned, typically this is a great event. We gather in a library with families and our scholars and have an opportunity to recognize their scholarship. And I think we also typically have an opportunity to have cake and speak with our scholars afterwards. However, that is not possible today, so we're going to do a little virtual celebration. And then I know Principal Bevan has some thoughts around how to really recognize our scholars. So at this time, I'd like to again congratulate our scholars and turn it over to Principal Bevan.
Yes, Superintendent Martino, thank you. Chairwoman Frank, thank you very much. Stephanie, if you can share me, give me screen sharing permissions, I can list the, I have the names of the students listed, because if I read them out loud, it's one thing, but it's nice to see them, if that's okay? Okay, great. So I'm going to bring their names up. And many of them and their families are here with us tonight virtually, and I welcome them and hope they're able to enjoy this moment. And congratulations to these students for this wonderful accomplishment. It really does say a lot about their hard work and putting themselves in a position to be recognized in this way is really a great way to start tonight's meeting. So our commended students, again, Ms. Frank, you indicated they finished in the top 3.3% of students who took the test. Those are Christopher Black, Joshua Chang, Sanjav Kandadi, Yasmin Lee, Madeline Laffel, John Mian, Kyla Pelham, Thomas Pianca, Hallie Riversick, I'm sorry, Nicholas Seto, Barathan Sundar, Abhinav Trabathy, Chloe Trong, Sophia Watanabe, Emily Wu, Karthik Yalala, Aleah Yan, and Catherine Zay. And we are very proud of them, and we're excited to give them a little bit of recognition tonight, and we will share in that recognition tomorrow. I'll tell you more about that in a moment. And then our commended, our semifinalists are these four individuals, which are Annika Thandu, David Gillingham, Jason Hu, and Pranitha Pallavarpu. So we're very proud of them and excited to share them in this honor. Tomorrow, for the students who are in person tomorrow, we're gonna have a small celebration in our courtyard where we take some photographs and share with them in this moment. And the other students who are in person on Friday will do that same thing. So this is kind of emblematic of the kinds of innovating and thinking around new challenges with new solutions that we're going to do. So these students have made us all very proud, and no one more proud than me, the principal here at the high school.
Thank you very much. A round of applause for all the students and their parents. Now, that's a great way. That's a great way to do it.
A great way to start a meeting, yes.
It is. It is. It's a great way. I wish that we could do this in person and to thank all the parents and the students. But I hope in the coming months that we will be able to see them and recognize them, maybe at an in-person meeting or even a graduation. But we're very proud of them and all their achievements and all their hard work that they have been doing in their career at Algonquin and even in their middle school, elementary schools in North Row and South Row. So thank you very much. And the parents, you must be very, very proud. So thank you again, and our heartfelt congratulations. Is there any other comments from board members?
Madam Chair, I would just like to say how exciting it is for people to be prevailing and thriving. Even though they took them last year, it is still lovely to be able to celebrate the accomplishments. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathleen Holland. Thank you so much. Any other board members with comments? And I was going, when I'm talking to Greg, I offered to compose a letter of the school committee's congratulations and commendation to these students, and we will be sending out a letter on behalf of all the regional school committee members. So thank you very much. Okay, on to the next agenda item. We ready? Okay, so before we go into action in the minutes, because of the depth of the agenda tonight, I would just like to read a statement about audience sharing and also about how we can proceed to go with the meeting so everybody has a fair voice tonight. We have an extensive agenda this evening. I would like to suggest we try to streamline our discussions as we move through tonight's agenda. I would like to limit discussion to 10 minutes on any motion brought forward. Questions, comments, two reports, I would like to allow at least one question per member, and ask that comments be limited to three minutes per member. During audience sharing, we look forward to hearing the comments and concerns of community members. I would like to suggest these comments be limited to three minutes. If there is a letter to be read into the record, I would like to recommend if the letter is longer than three minutes, that it be sent to the regional school committee's email to be distributed to each member. And that regional email is rsc@nsburrow.k12.ma.us. As a reminder, audience sharing is not a time to debate or discuss the concerns raised. I just would like to maybe institute that if we can. I know that it's not a set rule, but I would just like every voice to be heard and each member to contribute, but I want to make sure that we do it in a fair time because of administrators and us that we have. And after you go for a certain period of time, we start losing it a little bit. So if that's okay with everybody. And then I'd like to go on to the first item that we have, which is the action of the minutes of the open meeting of September 23rd, 2020. Do I have a motion to accept?
John, I'll move that we approve the open meeting minutes of September 23rd, 2020, and the special open meeting minutes of October 5th, 2020.
Thank you, Paul. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Chris. And Chris, is that for both sets of minutes?
Yes, it's for both sets of minutes.
Thank you. All right, so roll call vote to accept the open meeting minutes of September 23rd and the special open meeting minutes of October the 5th. Karen Ayers?
Yes.
Paul Bucka?
Yes.
Chris Cavino?
Yes.
Paul Desmond?
Yes.
Kathleen Holland?
Yes.
Kathy Key?
Yes.
Dan Kalenda?
Yes.
Sean O'Shea?
Yes.
And Joan Frank, yes. It passes unanimous. The next item that we have is educational policy. There is none at this time. And under new business, we have the APTO presentation.
So thank you. We are very fortunate this evening to have our APTO share the great work that was accomplished last year and looking ahead to some of the work that will be accomplished this year. Typically, this is a presentation that happens at the end of a school year. But again, because of the pandemic, it has shifted to October. So I am pleased to introduce to the committee members and the community Carrie Probst and Kumus Varajan, who are the APTO co-chairs, who will give a brief presentation. And I'll just ask Carrie and Kumu, would you like me to share, would you like to be the host?
Um, I'm fine either way. If someone wants to just operate the slides, and we'll be brief as you have a lot on your agenda tonight. I actually don't have the presentation with me, so.
All right, just give me one second.
Okay. And I can't see Kumu, but I'm assuming she can unmute and also participate. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. All right. Should I move forward? Are we ready?
One second. All right, thank you. You're all set.
Okay, thanks, Greg. I'm just gonna start off, and then Kumu will pick up. So we're excited to present tonight and appreciate this opportunity, especially during a busy time. So we'll keep it brief. But we are trying to really let parents know that APTO is a way for them to help the school, help the faculty, staff, and students, that we're kind of a pathway. So instead of, you know, always asking for help to help us as an APTO, we are trying to present ourselves as the pathway and the bridge between us and the school community. So we have an excellent board this year. Kumu and I are co-chairs together. We've been on the board for two years and are stepping up into this position. Wasim Sodome is our treasurer. He has a freshman at the school. Cheryl Naronha was with us last year as a communications coordinator and has done some amazing things for us as far as getting the word out about all that we're doing. And I believe her student is a sophomore this year. Heather Clancy actually has three students at the high school. She's our new administrative coordinator. And just really, all of these people have been really dedicated and helped us move forward. And we can move to the next slide. Last year, we did organize some in-school volunteering, mostly to help monitor the hallways in front of the bathrooms. And so parents would sign up and just be a presence in the school. And that was a great way for parents to be involved in the school. It was new last year. We also established connection with the class steering committees. I attended some of the steering committee meetings. We're trying to get in with the students as well as the faculty and administration. And so I attended some of those meetings. We're looking for parent representatives to represent each grade, if possible, on our board, and just so we again can find, to reach the students and find out what they need and how we can help. Financial reporting, we've been working on just getting everything squared away with our tax filing. We fulfill the teacher wishlist, more a school wishlist. Right at the end of the year, we were able to supply tissues, paper towels, hand sanitizer, things like that, right? Well, I guess it was sanitizing wipes. We couldn't find hand sanitizer at the time. But we're able to provide those for the high school, kind of right as the pandemic was hitting. We introduced additional fundraisers at restaurants for the first time. As I mentioned, Cheryl really helped us with our social media expansion, getting the word out. We really weren't on social media much before last year, and she really has taken over and spread the word for us. As we do every year, we gave senior scholarships to some senior students last year. And then we were able to, even though school was, you know, not in session at the school, we were able to offer some teacher appreciation. We gave some gift certificates to the teachers towards the end of the year. So that's kind of a wrap-up of the main things that happened in the 2019-20 year. So I'll let Kumu take it from here.
Hello, everyone. Can you hear me? I had some technology difficulty. I had to run around. Can you all hear me? All right, okay. Hello, everyone. Again, my name is Kumus Varajan. This is my third year with APTO, first year co-chairing. A pleasure to be here tonight. With that, I would jump into financials to give you a quick overview of the monies of APTO ins and outs. So last year, last school year, 2019-20, we started with like in September, we only had 300 something from the parents' donations. That wasn't a pretty picture over there. So we just, we had only four board members then. So like Carrie mentioned, we just immediately thought of joining the fundraisers, additional fundraisers. We never had it earlier. That was like neighborhood restaurants. Also, we did the drive-for-dollars in October with a goal of 10,000. And also, we went to the music festival, sold cookies and stuff, all that. The fundraisers and the other stuff like brought it down to only 700 with just a lot of effort and time. And the membership from October through this early year, like January, February, with the snail speed, brought it up to 4,000. So that was like 5K. That was the income. Moving to the expense, usually money start going out spring with the teacher appreciation, scholarship, and JPP, and et cetera. Around that time, we were in the thick of pandemic, so we couldn't do much. However, we covered like for all, we had been really thinking like, how can we just show at least a word of thanks to the educators and the entire staff? So quickly, we just spent about like a little more than 1,000, covered the entire school adult body, sent e-certs of Dunkin' Donuts, and we did give six students scholarships. So that was about it this year. We started this year, 2020-21, with 4.2 available balance for APTO. And pardon me for not putting this right now, we have 6.2. That's the story of the financial. If I can move to the next slide, thank you. This is our happy story. Communications like Carrie mentioned, like from where we were, we have grown leaps and bounds. So it may not be a very exciting number in comparison, but again, from there, we were a communications queen, we call it. Like she has really done an amazing job. So we are going to places, especially with Principal Bevan, support on one call. We hope to go to every household rather. And the exciting thing is she had been working for a long time, a parent's guide to Algonquin High School. So that's, I don't want to give away, so that's her baby, and it's just coming out. So it's gonna be a little exciting. Product or incentive. That's about the communication. And I'm ready for the next. And that's this year's accomplishments so far. We started with meet and greet with Principal Bevan in August 27, before the school started. That like stemmed from the fact that we were not going to have the eighth grade orientation. So it was like we had, we all had been there as a new parent, so we were continuously thinking of the new parents on top of the pandemic and on top of the new principals. So there were a lot of anxiety there. We approached Principal Bevan with a thought like very supportive. We hosted and sponsored that, and that was like, we never had that crowd. It just crossed to 100 people. We had to go live stream on Facebook. So all thanks to Principal Bevan, and like if he had performed well, we would keep our momentum going on. So that was the meet and greet in August, and then now September 15th, like school needed some, reached out to us with a help needing for the technology distribution. We opened like around that time, like no school inside, so we really wanted to open up a small opportunity to the parents. They weren't turned, but parents did come in and had the event out. That went well. Then we hosted Ice Cream Social. These are all new thinking because of the pandemic. So we had been continuously thinking again, like how to show like what we were feeling. All the parents, not all, like most of the parents, like sharing our thoughts of like, you know, giving something or like, you know, showing our thanks to the educators and the same for all the work they were doing. We thought of like Ice Cream Social. So what we hear is now, that went well, and it was well received and much appreciated. That covered the entire adult body again before the kids rented. Finally, we did the school celebrations. Principal Bevan put us this wonderful idea. He wanted to make it a celebratory for the kids to come in, two days, sixth and seventh of this month. So we opened again to the opportunity. These are the rare opportunities this year parents are going to have to support the school and, you know, to be there. They want. So we had like, it was very heartwarming, like many parents like came in, decorated all three entrances. So that was like all, that was all, again, it was all new thinking. It was new stuff. Supported the school. Moving on to my next. This, these are the health and safety, like Carrie told, like it is right now, that is all we can think of. The health is safety and supplies, like you can never get enough because of what's going on. And we are closely working with Principal Bevan and the administration, so that's all they need right now. We have advertised social medias, and we have like, you know, we have closely monitoring if they really need, like we can even support them. So that's ongoing. Also, to expand APTO awareness, like we're just phrasing out, like we are just rethinking, like rather than going out like, you know, support us, you know, support us, help us. Rather, we want to just change a little bit, like, you know, we are supporting you. We are creating the opportunities for you. We are all like for the same goal of supporting the school in return to support the student. To be the, and also like this is new thinking, like to be the voice for parents and guardians. We really want to insist that, and we are already seeing some good signs in the meeting, like parents are coming and voicing out and, you know, different opinions. That is, we strongly believe that's the way to, that's one of the ways to get better. And finally, we are standing by. We are very well aware, the board members at APTO is going to be very different. It has been already, and it's going to be. So we are standing by to take any orders from the administrator. So that's what we are keeping the, whatever we have monetary-wise and also the manpower with resources, services, and monetary, the goods and all. So we are very well aware again, and we, with Principal Bevan in place and our current board members, highly skilled and committed, we are hopeful and we are confident that we could be, we can be the solution to any problems, I mean, issues. Or rather, at least we can lighten the burden the pandemic has put pressure on stress to the educators. I think that's my last slide. Is there any questions for Carrie? I think that's my last slide. Is there any questions that for Carrie or anybody?
I don't have any question, but if I may, I just wanted to thank again the PTO for their wonderful work so far this year, and they're such great partners. And I'm lucky to have struck a friendship with you all. And I think the work you did to decorate the entrance to the building first days, the first two days was really wonderful and well received. And to put a fine point on it, we have kids who come in three different entrances in two different days. So and they made sure to make sure that each of those three entrances was, was looking great and still looks great. Honestly, here we are three weeks later, and we haven't taken them down because the kids really enjoyed them. And, and so I just wanted to share my appreciation. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Mr. Bevan. And before we leave, on behalf of APTO and actually on behalf of entire parent community, we would like to thank the leadership and the subgroups. Truly, a true thanks to you for all that tirelessly you have been working and to roll out all these plans in such details, and we only hope like they would be able to pull through with the cooperation. And so, thank you.
You're welcome. It's been a privilege.
And Carrie and Camille, I'd like to thank you as co-chairs of the APTO for all the hard work and dedication from last year and this year. And you certainly are, along with your membership, an integral part of the ARHS community. So thank you very much for everything that you're doing. Kathleen Holland, I see you have a question or comment?
I do have a comment. For very little funds, you folks sure do maximize. If that was a rate of return on an investment, it would be spectacular. I really commend you for making the funds go so far to please so many. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
We would, we would make sure we pass this message to the, we have the wonderful supportive parent group. We were, you know, we are, we are really lucky, but thank you for that comment. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions from board members? I see none at this time. I'd like to thank both of you again. Thank you so much, and take it back to the membership. We really appreciate everything you're doing.
Thank you.
Okay, next on our agenda, before we go to the next agenda item, Greg and I, in our discussions leading up from the time the agenda was posted to now, we would, I would like to move an agenda item because I think it's very important. And before we go under the new business, we talk about athletics, COVID. The conference is, I would like, if it's the consensus of the committee, I would like to bring the principal's report first as a lead on to these things, because I think it's a very integral part of what's happening in the community right now. So yeah, I just raise your hand if you have any opposition, board members of taking the principal's report and putting it before athletics. Okay, seeing no opposition. Mr. Bevan, we would like to now do your principal's report.
Sean, I believe you're muted. Sorry about that. I think my presentation is working. Now I am unmuted. Is that correct? Great. So thank you. Thank you, everyone, and it's great to see you all. I will, I'm happy to report out on the many things that have happened in the last month since we last met. And this is for later in the agenda. This is the photograph. The timing is perfect here. This is what the front of the building looked like in the rotunda for the opening of school, thanks to the hard work of our PTO. That was for our first day of day one for cohort B in person. Their return to school on October 6th was well received, and this is what it looked like. And October 7th was another day one, but for another half of our student population. By this time on October 21st, we're in day 10, which for each kid has been five days of in-person and five days of, five days at home, working remotely. So I just wanted to touch on some of the themes that I put in my write-up for the, for the principal's report. It's not a lot of days of in-person instruction. Of course, we've been doing remote instruction for a very long time. And even going back into the spring, even though this fall has been a bit different. And we have many takeaways, but I'm condensing some of the quick ones for you here. I'll just categorize them as our just generalized themes. One is that, and then I'll give you some teaching and learning themes here in a moment as well. So there's been, there was an initial steep learning curve for learning our new routines and protocols in the building, especially the traffic around the building, which, as you know, is, it goes in one direction. Each hallway goes in one direction, which took a great deal of time and planning and execution. And a lot of sharing out of maps and walking kids through what it would look like, but ultimately getting from one room to another, and then doing that to a new, new location in, in this new pattern, took a great deal of time. And then our kids weren't really thrilled with it, but I think they're starting to grow used to it, and they have extra time in their passing time to do that and do that. And of course, as a precaution to prevent kids from clustering and from passing in front of each other in a way that would be unsafe. Kids have shared with us over and over again that they really enjoy small classes. So generally speaking, we do have some classes larger than 12, but in a class that is 22 to 24, which is pretty typical, when you break that into two cohorts of kids, you end up with a group of 10, 11, or 12 kids in a room, and that's something students have really enjoyed. I think they enjoy getting a little bit more attention from the teacher. They enjoy hearing more from their, from a smaller group of kids. And that's not something I, it's not a surprise really when you say it out loud, but it's not something I think I initially thought kids would respond as well to. But it's really one of the first things they'll tell you if you ask an Algonquin student what they, they think of the reopening of school and hybrid instruction. Kids really, really like eating outdoors. So this is a shot here on the lower left of the students eating their lunch. As you know, it's been a really temperate fall, and they've, they've taken advantage of that to eat outside. They are, when I say roughing it, I don't know that that's the right word, but they are happy to just sit on the sidewalk and sit on the curb and sit on the grassy island in between the parking lot and the fire lane and enjoy each other's company. And I work with my administrators to make sure they're sitting apart from each other. And so that's been very well received. And I would imagine I will be hearing a lot of requests to keep that once all these, while these restrictions fall away someday. Social distancing definitely has required a great deal of effort and time and reminders to make sure students are staying far enough apart to be safe. As you might imagine, as you might have seen in your own life, teenagers like to be near teenagers. And I was a teenager once myself, and I can understand that. And they get closer and closer, you know, when they're near each other, and it's just taken a little bit of effort to maintain that distance. And now the teaching and learning parts, we're, we were prepared for this moment, and we put a lot of effort into this, this time. And the community gifted us with a great deal of time and resources in developing our professional skills for this new environment, which is entirely new and for which there are no best practices. So here, I'm just going to share some of the things I've seen around the building. This is just emblematic of the kinds of varied instructional approaches that we're seeing around the building. Teachers are developing new routines and new rhythms, and each teacher is doing that a little bit differently. There's no one-size-fits-all approach to it. Each one is navigating the different limitations that they're, they're required in their own way. So here on the right-hand side is Mary Rose Steele. She's one of our math teachers, and the way she comes to instruction is she, she livestreams a half of her, her group in, the students who are at home remote, and she teaches a lesson and uses an iPad where she, she writes on, she's a math teacher, and she's, she works her out math problems on the the iPad there. Those problems show up on the laptops of the kids in front of her. And if you see this bar at the top of this laptop in the front row there, or the closest to the camera, those are the learners at home who are following along. So this is a a pretty integrated livestreamed classroom, and we have many of those. On the lower left here, this is a conventional English class that, that is, this is a silenced voices classes, class taught by Emily Philbin. And these students are just having a classic English discussion about an important topic. I think in that day it was a social justice topic. And so in that case, they are, they are talking about a topic and talking it through while the students at home, I don't, I'm not entirely sure, but I think the students at home were doing something entirely asynchronous and independent. Other routines and rhythms that are starting to emerge is we have a lot of teachers doing certain things out, just taking their show on the road. So they go outside, and this is just outside my window, in fact, and I get to, I have the privilege of watching teachers come out and bring their classes in the sunshine and find new ways to, to have students do different things. So this is one of Ms. Turner's classes, I think, if I recall correctly. And they are doing, doing an activity that they've just brought outside so that they could get some fresh air. They're finding different ways to, to do that. On the lower left, you see a social studies classroom, and this is a robust conversation about the presidential election, and the students in the room on the back of the right of the, when the black shirt is just a regular full classroom of students, as full as it is in our current situation. And projected to the front board are all the other students who are at home, who are also participating in that classroom conversation. I hope I'm just trying to illustrate for you just a bit of a taste, a dipstick of the many different approaches our teachers are using, which I've encouraged. I think if we went for one approach entirely, I think that would become fatiguing for students. And so we're, we're looking at what's working best, and we're starting to identify some really great practices. On the lower left, this is Ms. Holmes. She is doing, that's a document camera over her, and she, you can see on the, projected to the screen, you can see her working out a problem in front of her students. So that really replaces what is more conventional teaching. If you were standing up at the board and, and writing on the board in, in close proximity to students, or even having students come to the board, which is pretty standard practice. This has replaced some of that in many of our classrooms. And on the right-hand side, this is one of our Spanish teachers, Senora Greenwald. He is teaching a pretty conventional direct instruction lesson. But what you may not catch here is on the left-hand side, on that music stand is an iPad that a student at home, one of our, I think one of our, possibly one of our standalone remote students is, is being remoted into the class where they can observe and see what he's writing on the board and hear him and participate in the class as they would if they were sitting right there. And so that is, that is kind of the overview, a very brief overview of what three weeks of learning have looked like here at the high school of the in-person portions. I did not really speak precisely to what's happening for our remote students, because we have gone, that's kind of covered ground. We've done that a great deal. I do think we're going to have to start to look at how has the experience of our remote students changed while they are in person on one day and at home on the other. And so trying to get that data will be, or we anticipate getting that data soon to just find out if there are some tweaks that need to happen. But that's what in-person instruction has looked like. I can tell you, I'm thrilled to see kids back in the building. The teachers are happy to see kids back in the building, and kids are happy to be here. And so that's been a real, a real nice change since we all, since I saw you last a month ago. In my principal's report, I added a few, a few also notes here. The standalone remote program continues to, to, to move along. All right. We have 78 students currently in the standalone remote program. We have more students in the ninth and 10th grades than in the 11th and 12th, which is not, not a huge surprise. And I really have to commend Kathy Carmini, my assistant principal, who has overseen the development of the standalone remote program and has applied incredibly innovative thinking for each kid who comes her way with an issue. So in a school of our size, with our vast offerings of kids, for kids, it's, it's difficult to build something that feels really, really tailored to each kid when you have so many restrictions. And she's done a really nice job of thinking outside of the box and talking to teachers and asking them to incorporate standalone remote students into classes that they might not, not otherwise be, be able to attend. So I really thank her. That program's done really well, as happens when there are changes in, in our data and families have changes in how they feel about things. We get students who add into the program or ask to, or asked to leave the program, and, and that has been something that's been a bit of a challenge that she's navigated very skillfully. So I thank Kathy for doing that hard work. And just, this is a very tiny, tiny note. One of the things we did differently this year that we got a lot of good feedback on is that we've really streamlined school-to-family communications. We used to send out many different forms and then collect them and try and figure out who's missing what. And we really tried to identify what those forms are communicating, condensed them into one format, and then get that out to, in a Google form, format, and then have our administrative assistants work through who we're missing. And that's been, I think, welcome from our families. That's what we're hearing, because the flurry of paper that, that, you know, we used to do just was inefficient and redundant year to year. So that's been an improvement, a small improvement, but a nice improvement. And then before I open to questions, I do want to highlight on the bottom right-hand, right-hand side, one of our senior graphic design students has, and this is not her in this photograph, I apologize, a young woman named Dana Godet has created our, what is becoming our signature letter A. She's one of our graphic design students. She's been happy enough and created new versions of them that we incorporate into our various, you know, communications to students. It's become almost like the Google doodle. If you ever see that when you log into Google, that's been a nice feature of the year and a way to celebrate student work. So, so I thank Dana for her hard work on that. The one on the bottom left is our flannel A, because Friday is Flannel Friday for our staff and kids. So that's the kind of, you know, emblematic of the work she does and how it contributes to what we hope is increased school spirit and a sense of cohesion in the, in the building. So I can open it up to questions. I know that's like a, I just hit you with a fire hose worth of information. I don't know if there are questions out there that I can answer at this point.
I thank you, Sean, for your great presentation. And one of your slides said best practices emerging, and I would say that's definitely true. And if pictures can speak a thousand words, those pictures really did. I had one question for you, and it concerns the lunches. Mainly because when we were there in August and we saw a classroom and we saw the cafeteria, and it had the tables, the individual desks that had the barcodes on it, because you can't assign seats to kids because they want to sit near friends. So if they, is that still in place? And number two, how do you take care of the students that are eating outside so that you know where they are if you have to go into the contact tracing?
So that's a good question, and Mary Ellen Duggan maybe can help me with this, but we've placed all the desks in the cafeteria and then in the C-Gym at six feet apart or more. And since they are six feet apart or more, we don't need to monitor where students sit because they are outside of the, the sphere where they would be considered a close contact if they sit in their seat and they eat the way that we monitor them in doing. So we have not had to create the, the tracking system in the cafeteria that we thought we might have, because we've been able to distance the desks apart in such a way that they won't need to, we won't need to, they should be far enough apart that they wouldn't be considered a close contact. And so if they're not considered a close contact, we don't need to contact trace for them. And the desks are, just to get really granular, the desks are all around the building in classrooms, and in those two spaces, there are, are small stickers on the floors where they, where the desks need to be replaced at the end of every lunch shift and at the end of every class. Every day, we, we move the desk back to make sure that, that, that they don't migrate or move closer than inside of six feet. Outside of the building, when the students are out on the sidewalk or on the, on the grassy area, we make sure they're six feet apart. So to my understanding from what Mary Ellen has indicated, if they're six feet apart, then they won't, we are living up to the standard that we need to. So we don't, we don't need to then simultaneously monitor who sat next to whom if they're far enough apart, if that makes sense.
Okay, yes, it does. Thank you very much. I have Paul Bucka and then Kathy Kate.
Thank you, Joan. And Sean, thanks for the, for the presentation. I appreciate it. I'm sure it's been a crazy first month. I've got a couple of just quick ones. So after a month or so, you know, what, have you guys reached any sort of conclusions on the likelihood that with this new sort of teaching methodologies that we're, we're kind of inventing, as you say, on the fly? What's the likelihood that we're going to cover a year's worth of, a standard year's worth of material? You know, using the procedures and protocols that we're using now? Are we going to get through it all? Are they gonna, or the classes going to kind of lag behind where they normally would be?
So I think the unfortunate answer is it's very difficult to cover that same amount of content in one year that with the same limitations that we have this year as we do compared to other years. And those limitations include we lost 10 days at the front of the school year. And then classes are roughly seven to 10 minutes shorter every class, every day. So you're losing about a half, a half an hour of instruction. And that's only the in-person parts that we're talking about. And then to compound that with the remote learning, that also makes it an issue. What I've asked my teachers and the, and the department heads to do, Ms. Bucka, is that also makes it an issue. What I've asked my teachers and the department heads to do, Ms. Bucka, is to identify the the most critical standards and to attack those with the most to use your time and prioritize your time to to make sure that the the power standards in any given course are the ones that get the most attention. And we're, I've asked teachers to do what we call spiraling, which is to to address those standards and then to come back to those with routine over the course of the year so that so that you're you're returning to those critical topics and those critical pieces of the of the curriculum with routine so that by the end, every student has mastered the critical pieces. Now, I don't want to suggest that that any piece of the Massachusetts frameworks is not important. But we've had to make some important decisions about which pieces are more, require more immediate attention than others.
Well, thanks. Just a follow up comment. I mean, I, I think that's something that we should be kind of paying a lot of attention to as the year progresses and, you know, assuming this is going to happen all through the school year, you know, then it would be, I think, incumbent on us to you know, have a pretty good handle on what that would be and, and maybe begin the formulation of some sort of a catch-up plan that could be used for, you know, subsequent years for for those students that don't graduate so that the ones that do graduate from Algonquin have have learned as much as their predecessors. You know, I think if there was a way that that could kind of routinely be, you know, a part of your report to us every couple of months or something, I'd appreciate it. And then if I could, just one other follow up question, the cohorts. Is there any contemplation on making any changes to the cohorts, say, after, you know, after the holiday break or anything of that nature? Or we just, we intend to keep them all in place as is for the full school year? Do we cross that bridge yet?
We haven't, we haven't had any conversations about that. I don't think it's out of the realm of possibility. I will say balancing them took a great deal of effort because the limitations in in each classroom are really finite. In many of our classrooms, it's, it was 12. So getting that balance just right took a great deal of, of hand to hand scheduling kids for a week or more. And I think that would be the cost of doing that if we were going to rebalance, if we were going to shake up the cohorts, there would be, you know, a cost for doing that in time and effort. And I think we'd have to just identify what the benefits are. And that's not to say there aren't any. We would just have to figure out what the, you know.
I hear comments from parents about how funny they think it is that, you know, buses are coming through their neighborhood to pick up a kid from, I don't know, house number seven, but a kid across the street in house number eight, you know, gets picked up the following day and could there be savings there? So anyway, thanks very much for your report. I appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, before we get to Kathy Key, I'd just like to make notation in our Zoom family tonight is that Greg has been meeting with the medical team at different times recently. So I had asked Greg if Dr. Medina, who is in our Zoom family tonight, and he is, I think Greg elevated him as a panelist. And we also have Mary Ellen Duggan, our health coordinator and department chair. So if anybody has any questions for them, Greg, is that okay if they ask them through the principals? Sean, is that okay through?
Happy to.
Joan, could I, could I also make a comment to Mr. Bucka's question around, you know, is this the model for the remainder, the remainder of this academic year? Or are we looking at other models as well? And I will share that we are making plans so that we're prepared to be able to shift and move if the data supports that. So, you know, we're working, we're going to be working closely with a leadership team, the associations and thinking about, okay, if the data is positive and is trending in a different way or something changes, what would that look like in terms of in-person learning? Mr. Bevan talked about, you know, it's very difficult in this model to cover all of the content. And one way to look at this is if we can increase in-person learning time, that's a benefit to be able to really make sure our students are getting what they need in our, in our educational system.
Okay, so Dr. Medina, thank you for giving us your time tonight and helping us in our questions and in our concerns. Next, I have Kathy Key.
Thank you, Sean, for your, it was great. I have two questions for you. My first is what are the percentage of teachers who are live streaming their classes? And how is that going so far? And my second question for you is are teachers routinely checking in with their kids to make sure that they're doing okay since they're spending so much time on their computers in classes? And I ask this because having three kids in college and having them do the majority of their work online, it's been really difficult not to have the camaraderie of their peers with them just getting through the amount of time they spend on a computer. So I just, if you can just give me a quick update on those.
Sure, I can. So I, in answer to your first question, we have something in the neighborhood of about 40 to 45 teachers who are doing some form of live streaming and it might even be a little bit higher than that, it might be a little bit lower. And live streaming can look like a variety of different things. Some teachers who pop open a laptop and they stand in front and lecture in the same way that you might remember growing up. And that that experience is pretty standard for everybody, remote and in-person. And then there are other teachers who might be using an iPad to capture one kid who's a standalone remote kid. You know, once a week, let's say, or something like that. So it's, it's kind of varies. So I'm sorry, that's a very wishy-washy answer, but I outfitted 45 of our teachers with a very inexpensive hardware to help expedite and make live streaming a little bit more smooth and to make the audio best, as best as it can be. So I think it's about 40 something out of 120 or so, something like that. I think if you were to correlate it by department, I'd, I see when I'm in the building, I see more more math and science teachers doing, doing some form of live streaming than than some of the other places. The humanities lend themselves to, to not necessarily to live streaming quite as much. I will say you've struck on something, Kathy, that I hear a lot. I think kids do like having the fully in-person teacher teaching them even if they are in person or if they're in front of their computer. So I've heard that, I've heard that kind of feedback from kids and families. So so that's an answer to your first question. Your other question, we don't have a routine way teachers are checking in. We do have a form we ask teachers to submit if they have a student who's physical or or digital attendance is flagging, or if when they're there, they're not participating, participating real well. So that we have a mechanism to try to capture those, but that I think would only get the most dramatic cases. What I will say, which was heartening, is in our PD session of the October, October 5th, we asked teachers to preemptively identify anticipated best practices. So as since these don't exist, there's no research. As a staff, we try to identify the things that we were planning on trying as a staff that we thought would work best. And the number one most common response was finding ways to build a classroom community despite these challenges. And people came up with a list of different ways to do that because, you know, a classroom really is like this organic space and relationships do form even in a short period of time. And that's really hard to do in the current environment. And to be deliberate about doing it is something that our staff identified without me prompting that that that's something they're all eager to, eager and trying to do on a day-to-day basis. It's not the same as getting data on how they're feeling about it, which I'm, I think they're doing or they're gathering that anecdotally. But that's, that's a goal that emerged from that professional development session.
All right. So can I just have one, like, quick follow up? So the teachers are not live streaming. Are they duplicating their curriculum every other day?
Some are coming at it different, in different ways. So you might have, for instance, as an English teacher, you might be reading a, reading a novel. And the students might be working on a piece of writing in in support of their kind of exploration of that novel. So on a day where they're in person, you might be having a robust conversation about something important that happened in that novel that feels really really intimate because now you only have 10 kids talking about that, that thing simultaneous to that. The other students aren't being live streamed in at all. They might not even have to check in with the teacher in a synchronous way at all. They have to work on peer editing with somebody else, you know, in their class digitally on a Google Doc, or they might need to, you know, produce a certain amount of writing to be unpacked in the next time they are in person. So, so it's, it's a little bit hard to to put a fine point on it. I don't know that, that we have that many teachers who are teaching one lesson on Tuesday, teaching the identical lesson on Wednesday because it's two different, different things, two different groups of kids and then swapping, but they might.
Okay, thank you.
All right, Paul Desmond.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Sean, for that, for that report. I have two comments and a quick question. First, I just wanted to commend you on a, on a couple of the things you mentioned, starting with communications, which, which I agree have been, have been really good. And especially putting all those forms online was much appreciated. And I also want to commend you on how you've handled reminders about social distancing and masks and such. You know, anecdotally, I've gotten word mostly from my two kids that it's, it's been done in a sort of gentle, non-accusatory manner. And Kathy Carmignani, you were mentioned in particular, so thank you. And I, I just think that's the right approach, I mean, given everything the kids have had to deal with these days. I think that's just the right way to do it.
Well, thank you. Go ahead. I'm sorry. I accept your appreciation and it's been enjoyable, even, you know, telling to kids to keep apart can be enjoyable. It's more enjoyable than than being in the building with no kids in it.
Exactly. And I'm also glad to hear that you're encouraging multiple approaches for teaching. And you mentioned you're evaluating the various processes. And I wonder if you can talk about that a little more and, you know, how you're doing that evaluation? And when do you think you might have some results? And then what do you plan to do with those results?
You know, I, we're only in our 10th day, so we are really kind of in the infancy of this. But my department heads, we meet on a weekly basis and and once we, I think in the next couple of weeks, probably, I'd say in the next two weeks, once we get through the budget process is something that we're in the middle of now and the the start of the evaluation process, I think that will give us, give us a lot to do. And then simultaneous to that, it gives our teachers time to settle into their rhythms and then will allow us to, to come back to examining what's working and maybe, you know, what's not.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else, Paul? No, okay. Chris Covino, I saw your hand raised one time, but now it's down. Do you have a question?
I'm all set. Actually, Kathy Key addressed some of my concerns. So and all I can really say is to Principal Bevan, thank you very much for, for all that you and your staff and the teachers are doing at this time. My son is thrilled to be back at school. And he actually made a comment today about how you were walking around and interacting with the students and asking how they were doing. And that's, that's much appreciated and great. Very welcoming and great to have for the students at the school. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Yeah, it's the best part of the job. So I really enjoy doing it.
Okay, I have Kathleen Holland and Kathleen Polczko.
Thank you so much for this report. And I yearn for that time that we talked about, Mr. Bevan, of spending a little time chatting casually. But the concerns, as an educator myself, I'm not as concerned about learning content as I am moving through the times. And so I'm wondering about weaving in the the notion of cognitive flexibility and resilience in this time. I've been reading a lot of social media within the community about angst of no Halloween and, you know, it, it's not devastating. I mean, we can interpret any life circumstance to our advantage. We can say it's devastating or we can say, okay, we'll do it next year. That kind of cognitive flexibility, I think, is the hallmark of executive functions in our species. So that's one question. And in the midst of this time, wondering about social justice as a key feature of learning. Now, that is content I would wish to drive home from a personal standpoint. I know that my college is completely devoted to doing that. And where the high school where my husband teaches, they are not giving homework yet. They're not allowed to give homework yet, and they are drilling into social justice within every lesson. Now, some people may be more qualified to do that from the, from the perspective of the personal work. But these two topics occur to me as gorgeous learning opportunities from these tumultuous times. Thank you.
Yeah. So I don't know exactly how, how to respond. You've shared, you shared a great deal. I think flexibility of any kind is really the, almost the top skill that we're asking kids and adults to demonstrate. And, and kids have been really great and in the building so far this year. And they've got a lot on their plates. And I try to, I have to remind myself and to adults as well. These are teenagers who, who are used to doing teenage things and they've been in a quarantine situation for seven months. And so when I feel frustrated when I'm pushing kids apart, physically, of course, but when I'm asking kids to socially distance at lunch, these are kids who are acting like kids and that's understandable that they are. And yet we still need to employ the strategies that to keep them safe. And so we are doing lots of different things to reinvent as many things as we can in a way that's appealing to kids. Next week, we have a a spirit week, which we've, is the first that we've had with Halloween costumes and and other just kind of spirit days of where kids can wear their school attire to show their school spirit. So that return to normalcy is, is something we're excited about, but emblematic of the issues we're dealing with, we are doing two two spirit days because there are different groups of kids on Tuesday and Wednesday and two Halloween days on Thursday and Friday because it's two different groups. So, so it's that kind of thinking we need to just continue to apply to make it an enjoyable experience for kids while keeping our academic expectations high.
I appreciate that they see the changes in their school system that are adapting because I think that we need to live with the way things are and not the way things aren't. Otherwise, our beautiful life force is used to rail against, against the uncontrollable. And to me, that's one of the great gifts of this time. And again, the social justice issues of the day concern me well beyond any political science or history classes. It should be a thread that runs through all of our conversations.
Yeah, we are culturally, culturally sensitive. Instruction is something that we are looking closely at. And I think social justice and doing that and addressing social justice as a subtopic of that is something that we're all going to be learning about very soon.
I appreciate Greg's leadership in this, in the reading that he is suggesting and the conversations we've had about promoting this because these are the times in which we live and the times in which we get to prevail. So thank you.
Thank you.
Kathleen Polczko.
Okay, so first of all, I want to thank the APTO for, because I don't get to go to the high school anymore. So those pictures were worth a thousand words. And, and I think that they just did a phenomenal job, like you said, Sean, making the building and the, the experience much more welcoming and just a little bit more festive. So thank you, APTO. I would also like to thank Dana and her amazing graphic design A. And the one that I love best is the one with the mask. So if, because I know that you're, you know, phenomenal about promoting the whole mask wearing in, in, in the building on the premises. But I think that we need to help the kids remember is they really, really, really need to do that off premises. And so any reminder or any, I think that was a really fun graphic illustration of what they need to do even when they leave the school building. So thank Dana for that. So my question basically is for those of us who don't have kids in the, in the school anymore, and so we're not, you know, as tuned in, what does a typical and average day look like for the cohort of kids who are not in the building, that they're at home? And, and can you just alleviate my concern that are there kids that literally for just because of the luck of the draw are not getting any interaction with Algonquin or with their teachers on the days that they don't physically come into the school?
So that varies by kid, by student, depending on who, which teachers they have. So I when I'm cruising around, making sure kids are far apart, I also am asking them how it's going to Mr. Covino's point. And I dug in on that with a few kids last week, the other day. And one, one girl was telling me she had, on her remote days, she had direct contact with every teacher in every class. And the girl next to her had one class that had a very light contact and then asynchronous, like independent work. And both of them said they liked what they had, which you know, I don't want to be all rosy, you know, and it's not always a rosy picture for every kid because there's another kid probably who spending that amount of time in front of a laptop who the first kid really liked, might not like that, that approach. So I will say, I don't, I don't have a perfect grasp on what that looks like because I think it looks like many different things. And as we settle into these rhythms, we're going to be able to gather some data on what is an average kid's day look like and what are the outliers days? And what are the outliers' days look like? And what is the best course of action? And, and kids do respond to variety, and they, no kid likes to have the same kind of lesson every time. And so it's incumbent upon me to start to, to get a handle on that now that we're heading into, you know, we're halfway through week three, which feels, you know, it's exciting, you know, and things are feeling normalized, and we can get a little bit of data on what those days look like. So in answer to your question, I think, I think it looks like many different things to many different kids, depending on which classes they have and how much screen time they have is really dictated by that, by the teacher's choices, which vary. So I apologize, that's kind of a, a bit of a vacillating answer, but I think it's true. And I also think it's true that kids, kids respond differently to those different scenarios. So I think we'll, we'll start to gather more information soon on that, now that we start to have a lot of our routines down and our traffic patterns and our, you know, all those like really concrete logistical things. Now we can start to dig into the instructional choices teachers are making and how kids are responding.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Karen Ayers, I saw you had your hand raised.
Yeah, I just wanted to touch base on that a little bit, just to kind of chime in, let Kathleen know. My kids are not, and Mr. Bevan know that their routines are, they're liking them as well. On the days that they're not in school, my daughter has one live Zoom. My son doesn't have any, but he tries to get up at 7:30 to get his work done. So because then he can go to soccer later. And they're really kind of enjoying that, the freedom of the day. And so it seems to be working out well for them and, and everything involved. So I just kind of wanted to chime in on that.
Thank you, Karen. I have a question for the medical staff. I have for either Dr. Medina or for Mary Ellen Duggan. Now that, you know, the kids are back in school all across America, we can see that cases are rising, you know, in high schools and in colleges. And I just wanted to know if you could explain this almost like three part. What is the difference between the two different tests that you can get for COVID? You hear about the rapid test that comes in three hours, and then you hear the one that's going to take two or three days. Which one of these is reported to you or from the Board of Health? And what are the symptoms changing? Because as this virus gets changed and mutates, sometimes the symptoms change for young adults. I mean, is it just one symptom that a young adult may have, like a sore throat? Or do they have to have a sore throat and second symptom? And I just need some clarification on that, and I think it would be an education for the parents, and also the protocol the parents find and what they should go through when they have their students seeing some of these symptoms and going through the checklist.
Staff, do you want to start or do you want me to?
I can start, I can start. So I'll start with the symptom part of it, because it will lead into the testing part of it. So we're following the CDC guideline of, of the symptoms that they've released, and there are low-risk symptoms such as nasal congestion and headache. They alone should be looked at. They alone may not automatically warrant a test. We have to look at that very carefully. However, if you have any high-risk symptoms, such as fever or cough, shortness of breath, loss of taste of smell, loss of sense of taste, vomiting, diarrhea, those are all considered higher-risk symptoms, and any one of those symptoms should trigger a test. And if you have nasal congestion in combination with one, then obviously you will get it, or headache in combination with one, you will get a test. And we, we pretty much, I think Mary Ellen has done a phenomenal job of communicating this to parents. I think that these lists are available for every parent to see. And I'll let Mary Ellen go into some of the protocol on what parents will do if, if this is the case. But in order, if they have any of those symptoms, they will need a negative PCR test before returning to school, which gets into that first part of your question. So there are multiple test use out there. So the first people have heard about is the rapid, the rapid antigen test. It, what I'll talk about in terms of negative and positive predictive values. So it's negative predictive value is very poor. I mean, if you have a negative test, that needs to be backed up with a PCR automatically. We cannot let anybody return to school based on a negative antigen test. An antigen gets a little trickier when they're positive. And they have to be interpreted in, in, in the context of what you're seeing. So a positive antigen test can have a higher predictive value, positive predictive value, if you are in an area of high prevalence, or if you have somebody who has symptoms that are very consistent, such as loss of taste, loss of sense, loss of smell, that test will have a higher positive predictive value. It will have a much lower predictive, positive predictive value if your prevalence is low, and if someone is asymptomatic or mildly symptomatic. And then it's, it's a little, you know, that's the best way that I think that we can explain that phenomenon with it. And it can vary. So if, for example, you're of prevalence of 1% and an asymptomatic person, you could have a positive predictive value of only 64%, which does not make it a very good test at all. If you're in an area of high community prevalence, say even up to 20% with someone who's symptomatic, you're, you're, you could go up to even 95% or 98%. So that's why the gold standard is really the molecular PCR. Now, the other type of test that, that's come out that is being looked at is a rapid PCR. And there are definitely different companies that are working on this right now. Abbott Now is one of the more common ones that's out there, that a lot of places are doing. That also, the difference between that is it's the amount of DNA amplification you do to make sure there's virus there, and there, it's done quicker, so there's less time that they're looking for amplification. I think that's maybe the easiest way to explain it. So what we may see again is a possibility of a high false negative rate or a very poor negative predictive value. Abbott ID has said that their newer tests have a better negative predictive value, but that is something that is still being looked at. So we are really encouraging a molecular PCR test. We have a list of sites for parents to go to. We have a standing order for our district if they want to go to some sites that we partnered with. And, and all those will do the molecular assay test. Turnaround for that, turnaround time for that is anywhere between 24 to 48 hours at most sites. Some sites are a little longer right now. So that kind of answers your question on what we're looking at in terms of testing.
Yes, it does, thank you.
Sure, Greg, can I share my screen and we can go through the symptom list that parents have access to?
Yes, so you are now the co-host.
All right, perfect. So everybody knows we have the new district reopening website. And at the top are some of our frequently needed and requested documents. So the parent guidelines for what to do if my child is sick is a flow chart that we have for parents. And staff, there's one for staff too. So as you can see here, these are the list of symptoms. At the top, any symptom of fever, shortness of breath, loss of taste or smell, nausea, vomiting or diarrhea, sore throat, body aches, cough. If you have a single, any single one of those symptoms, you need to follow this red box and do what it says here. If you have fatigue, nasal congestion or headache plus any other symptom, then you need to go to the red box. These symptoms by themselves do not lead us to have someone tested right away. But if they are with other symptoms, then we would recommend that they stay home, notify the school of the absence, they call the school nurse, and they call their healthcare provider. So when they call the school nurse, we can give them the testing site info, which is another document that we have that someone had suggested on the medical advisory team. Maybe we need to print this out hard copy and send it home hard copy for people to hang on their fridge, so they'll know what to do. And this gives local sites, these are the two sites that we've collaborated with, thanks to SaffDAR's hard work. And we've been having just a little over 24-hour turnaround time when we send our students there. And then there's additional sites that are close to us and other stop the spread sites in Marlboro, Massachusetts, and other Massachusetts COVID testing sites. So those are the things that we have for parents to look at if they're wondering what to do if their student is symptomatic. And there is another one that if they're wondering if their student is a close contact or if they traveled, what they should do.
Mary Ellen, a quick, a quick comment that another, another method is to call the school and speak to the nurse.
Yes.
That is also a recommendation, so families should feel free to do that. And we're asking families to err on the side of caution if their son or daughter is not feeling well. You know, be conservative, keep the student at home, check with a nurse or your physician. And, and I think, you know, caution is the best, I think, the best measure at this point in time.
So yes, the nurses are diligently following up on every person that has symptoms that's called in. Anybody that signs in late that says they might, weren't feeling well. So it's been a lot of, they're doing a lot of hard work over there. All of the nurses are following up on every student who's symptomatic at home or at school.
So, so Mary Ellen, would you mind just, you know, over the past several days, we've had communications out to the school committee and the community about a couple of individual cases? Can you just speak to that so the community can hear what we're doing and what we're seeing? And who we're, who we're consulting with in terms of what actions are required?
Sure, so do you want me to share my screen again? Or do you want to share those slides? You're muted, but.
You can share your screen.
Okay, hopefully I can find it there on all of this. Here we go. So what happens? Move everybody out of the way here. So what happens when there's a positive case? There's a lot that goes on when we get notified of a positive case. So the things that happen, either we find out as the school district or the school nurse gets notified by a parent that their child tested positive, or the Board of Health nurse gets the information and contacts the school. So if we get the information, we contact the local Board of Health nurse. If they get the information, they contact us. So this is a collaboration, the, where we work together. No cases are confirmed and no contact tracing is started by the school until we confirm it with the local Board of Health nurse. So when we talk to the local Board of Health nurse and we find out that someone does, is definitely a positive case and denoted that by the Department of Public Health, that would be a positive PCR test. We, if the person is symptomatic, we look back 48 hours prior to the symptom onset when we're looking at contacts, people they may have come in contact with during that 48 hours prior to symptoms starting. And if they're asymptomatic and had a positive test, we look back 48 hours prior to their positive test. So when we're determining who's a close contact, I'm sure many of you have seen the news today. It's the CDC changed the definition of close contact a little bit. And before it was within six feet for 15 minutes. And they had never defined whether that 15 minutes was cumulative or whether it was just a one-shot deal and all at once. So now what they're saying is that is a cumulative time. So five minutes here, five minutes there. So when we're thinking about the, the contact tracing and your close contact, you're thinking about your viral load that you're being in the presence of when we're doing contact tracing. So we interview the positive individual, their parents, their guardians, to determine their interactions during that 48-hour look-back time. And we talk about whether those interactions, both in school and out of school. Out of school, you know, we do their classes in school, their extracurricular activities in school, sports, the bus, car pools, gatherings outside of school, which there's been a lot of sleepovers happening, which we really need to advise that this is not the, a low-risk behavior and really is impacting our ability to maintain our in-school learning that's going on if these behaviors outside of school continue. We look at lunch, we ask them who they ate lunch with, what, you know, their classes. We look at their class schedule. We ask the teachers, they bring us their seating charts, who is sitting around them. So all those kinds of things are things that we look at when we're doing this contact tracing to see if they meet the definition of a contact. So the public health nurse interviews potential contacts to confirm. So if I've, it's come up in my contact tracing with school staff that they're not sure, they can't definitively say whether they were, would be considered a close contact or not, I send those people to the public health nurse, and she does a more intense interview to find out, to get to the answer for them, to find out if they were, are really considered a close contact. So. So whatever we find out, we get all this information, but we find out information from parents, from teachers, from whatever sources we get, both the public health nurse and I collaborate on a constant basis almost, it seems like. We both kind of cringe when we see each other's phone numbers come up, all three of us. So the pub, the public health nurse, the Board of Health nurse in both towns, so we're working with both towns, they are the ones that determine if a person is a close contact. They are the ones that determine the quarantine time and the end of quarantine dates. So the dates of the quarantine, as well as the end of date, end of quarantine dates, and their return to normal activity dates. So I know there was a lot that went on this weekend, like what do I do if my child is potentially a close contact? I found out a friend had a positive test, and I'm not sure what to do. The most important thing to do is have your child stay home. Do not have them attend any social gatherings. Do not have them attend school while we figure this out. So this is what we need to do. I would, secondly, contact your healthcare provider. They are a great resource. Your Board of Health nurse is a great resource. I can be a great resource, and your school nurse can be a great resource. So any of those people could be a resource and direct you in what you should do if you think your child is a potential close contact, or if your child tested positive and you're not sure what to do next. If you aren't sure what to do and you can't get in touch with anybody and your child is symptomatic, if ever you think your child may have been a close contact or any, this is for any person. If you think you might have been a close contact and you become symptomatic at any time, you should get a PCR test. And this link here is just the testing site information that we already went through. I think that just about covers it. So that's why my video was off at the beginning of this, because I was following up on some cases here and talking with our Board of Health nurse. But so that's what we do behind the scenes to find out who close contacts are. Joan, did that answer your questions?
I think it did. And Mary Ellen and Dr. Medina, thank you for the refresher. I don't think there can ever be a time where we can't be refreshed on, on the protocols of this. And it's, and you gave us new information about the CDC guidelines about the close contact, and now that it's a cumulative time, not just a long duration. So thank you very much, and please come back.
That news is hot off the press, Joan, just today, so.
And that's 10 minutes, correct?
15.
15? Okay. Okay, no, that, and that's really great. So anytime you have any other updates, if you can provide them to us, I know you have, and you're doing a fantastic job by communicating to us and to the parents, and it's great to see it again tonight. So thank you very much, I appreciate it. Are there any questions or comments from board members? I have Paul Bucka and Kathleen Polczko.
Thank you, Joan. So, so Mary Ellen, I mean, and, and I appreciate the, the, the information. An awful lot of it seemed to be focused on what happens when a, when a member of the high school community is symptomatic. Are there protocols in place as well so that, you know, when, when the Board of Health is doing, say, contact tracing over a case for someone who's not a member of the high school community but has come in close contact with someone who is? How do we find out about that? Are there, are there ways that that is kind of routinely come our way? Or is it more happenstance?
So if, if one of our students has a, is a, considered a close contact from something outside of school? Is that your question?
Yes.
Yeah, so.
Who tells?
By our screening that we do, every, that, that parents do their daily pre-screening, the self-monitoring checklist that everybody goes to, one of those questions is, has my child been identified as a close contact? So we, each school nurse has a tracking sheet where they track close contacts or symptomatic students and what the plan is for them, and when they can come back to school. And we talk to the Board of Health, and typically we find out from the phone calls from the parent, and then we call the Board of Health to confirm it. And then, or they call us and tell us, you know, like this person was in contact, so they can't come back to school. This is their return to school date. So then that list is shared with the administrative staff, that's a list of when they can come back to school. And so that's the, there's a whole protocol, so about, you know, making sure kids. That's the there's a whole protocol so about, you know, making sure kids aren't in school that aren't supposed to be in school.
True. Thank you.
Hi, Kathleen Polczko.
So sort of along those same lines. So your. Workflow seems to be. It highly. It 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 seems to be mostly regarding the. People who are symptomatic. And it just seems to me that if somebody is has been a close contact with somebody who's then tested positive. Even if they're asymptomatic, they should still absolutely get tested. And. So my only, it's not a question, it's it's actually my experience is that I've gone to, because I've had to, gone to AFC Marlboro. For asymptomatic testing and it is, it could not be more convenient and fast. I mean, you sign up with a signup genius. And then you drive through, somebody sticks something up your nose and then in five minutes you're done. And then in twenty four hours you get the the results. So I I would hope that. We're also emphasizing to especially kids to get the test even if they're not symptomatic because these young people aren't symptomatic. So so and my only point is it could not be easier. It could not be, I mean, it used to be, I think, really. Kind of invasive, but I don't think it is anymore. So everybody should do it. Massachusetts has just done a phenomenal job with the whole spread, you know, what is it cease the spread or stop the spread? And it's the best tool we have. Have to try to keep especially these young kids from just spreading things, not only to the each other, but to also their.
You got muted at the end there Kathleen, but that is absolutely true. So if anybody is a potential close contact or considered a close contact, we send them. A whole list of what they're supposed to do. They get a. Protocol quarantine protocol when there's so when someone is. Does determined to be a close contact, identified as a close contact. The guidelines are to get tested anywhere between day four and day eight after your. Of your quarantine time of your fourteen day quarantine because that's when. It's most likely to have a positivity, you know, your positivity rates starts to go up during those days. You don't want to test too soon. So that's why, you know, like if you think your child is a close contact, it's really good to speak to either your healthcare provider. A public health nurse or the school nurse or myself because we're going to tell you, don't get tested yet, just wait, stay home, wait. Because it's too soon, like you won't, this test is not going to be meaningful and we're going to tell you in four more days, you need to go get tested. So. That is definitely part of our. Protocol that we follow here, so.
Perfect. Thank you.
And I'm gonna just tag that, you know, if someone comes back in that four to eight day period with a negative test, they still must finish their quarantine because. Even though that's the highest probability you'll get the test back, but they still need to finish that time period. I have had patients that have, you know, started being symptomatic at day twelve. So it's definitely that that fourteen day period is honored, even if that initial test is negative in four day.
Yeah, so that's a message that can can't be said enough either. You cannot test out of a quarantine. So that's a message that we can't say enough.
Okay, thank you. Paul Desmond.
Just a quick question. Where can we find that list of testing sites that you showed, Mary Ellen? I was looking on the reopening site and I couldn't find it.
Sorry, if you go into, we need to put it specific specific testing site information, which we will, sorry, I'll ask I'll ask Galen, who's been doing that right at the top up there, but. If you go into if my child is symptomatic. The test site info is one of the blocks that's in there. So we can. We will put a separate test site info. Up there so people can have rapid access to it.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Thank you for that reminder.
Great point, Paul. And thank you, Mary Ellen, for making it easier to get to. Right, Greg, do you have anything that you'd like to say? There's no other questions as we close out this section on the report?
I just want to. Comment that we are very fortunate as a district to have. Mary Ellen Duggan as our Health and Wellness Coordinator and our medical advisory team. They provide a level of expertise that is bar none to any other community in the Commonwealth. We're very fortunate. We also work very collaboratively collaboratively with our Boards of Health. And Department of Public Health and all decisions really are made in that partnership. With our medical advisory team expertise and again, the Board of Health and Department of DPH. So we are very fortunate. And again, I just want to applaud Mary Ellen for her leadership in this area. She's been outstanding.
Yes, Bravo to Mary Ellen and Dr. Medina. Thank you so much. And Mary Ellen, when Greg was in some of our talks, I said, does Mary Ellen need more help? Because I can imagine your phone, as you just said, is going off the. Off the wall at probably any time of the day. So thank you very much for keeping our community and our and the citizens and the staff and students healthy. Thank you so much and educated.
So through the chair, can I just make some general comments about our high school leadership team? So I just want to. Thank the high school leadership team, Mr. Bevan. And the system principals have done an outstanding job launching the academic year. It has been. Daunting Herculean effort and they have done it so well. The priority has always been student safety and I'm pleased to share that our protocols and procedures are working well. You know, the mask wearing, the hand washing, the social distancing, the disinfecting, the screening. And that is what is allowing us to continue in the hybrid model. So. I just wanted to take a minute and thank them for their great work. It's hard to believe that we've only been in person session for a couple of weeks. But again, I just I can't underestimate the amount of work and how grateful I am for their leadership. So thank you.
Great comments. Bravo. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Greg.
So now we're going to go on to back to our. Order as stated in under our agenda. So under new business, now we go to athletics update and I would turn this over to Mr. Michael Marsarino.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. First, if you don't mind, I'd like to go back to the the beginning of the agenda and congratulate all the National Merit Scholars. What a complete honor and accomplishment and they all should be extremely proud for their recognition tonight. I know that there's a lot on the agenda for tonight, so I'll try to keep this brief and where we kind of stand right now, but. Athletics actually is into their their fifth week of of participation, which start started back on September eighteenth and. As the norm for Algonquin Athletics, our student athletes continue to represent the school communities. With outstanding performances on the field by showing great sportsmanship and dedicating themselves to the excellence in the classroom. Our student athletes were excited to have that opportunity to get back on the field this fall. We endured six to seven month absence from athletics and our students understand that the goal this year is not about the winning or the losing, but. About having the chance to finally be able to play and to compete and to have fun and athletics is committed. To the community initiative of keeping the boroughs low and by maintaining social distancing and wearing masks and washing hands and the importance of all of these. And following the guidelines and protocols that are in place for our districts and our league. And the most importantly is we're always keeping in mind the health and the safety of our students, our coaches, our families is always our top priority. But the bottom line is ARHS Athletics and being out the field and having conversations with our kids and. Again, our fifth week in, we are excited to be back and having this opportunity. So just to go over a couple of things that we're trying to put back into motion now that we're back into hybrid learning and our our kids are back in person, but. In November, we will be recognizing the T.O.C. of the Month Award for the months of September and October. This award will continue to recognize our outstanding student athletes for demonstrating of leadership, teamwork, sportsmanship. And excellence on and off the field. Our Athletic Council. Organization that we have, our leadership team, we're organizing our first Athletic Council Leadership Team Meetings. Our Athletic Council is actively empowering our student athletes while feeling invested in the athletic department. Our Fall Captains will be invited to participate again this year in our Athletic Council. We look to do that with all of our captains each season. And we will be incorporating more leadership activities. We have three student ambassadors this year. We have Nick Alcock, Senior Danielle Adams, our Junior, and Katie Cullen is our sophomore. And they will be attending their first MIA Student Ambassador Leadership Workshop on November sixth. Goals to have three have all three attend the Leadership Conference at Gillette Stadium. And the National Girls and Women in Sports Day in Boston, but we are anxiously awaiting to see if these events will be run. NLI Day, which is National Lander of Intent Day, is going to be on Wednesday, November eleventh. And as in every year, we are hoping to host a signing day and if we can't do it in person, we will look to recognize our students virtually if needed. And we want to recognize our athletes who sign their National Lander of Intent to play in collegiate athletics. The following Coach of the Year Awards were announced last spring, but due to the COVID, they were unable to kind of receive their recognition. So if you don't mind, I have two Coach of the Year Awards I'd like to recognize. That were were brought out at the end of spring of last year. Our Massachusetts Massachusetts State Track Association, the MSTCA, announced their Coach of the Year selections for indoor track. I'm proud to say that Coach Galvin, Coach Patrick Galvin, is the Girls Track Central Mass Coach of the Year. This is Patrick's second Coach of the Year Honors. He was given the award two years ago for girls cross country. Gene Fedak, former former teacher here at Algonquin Regional High School, who still continues to coach. Has been selected as the recipient of the two thousand and twenty MIA Coach of the Year Award for Sport of Swimming and Diving. This selection was based upon her excellence of character and the impact on our students and community and coaching credentials. Our impact testing, which is implemented back two thousand sixteen seventeen as a resource for our families, student athletes and their primary care physicians while concussion testing. Again, I'd like to reiterate, which we talked about our families are, that this is a free resource and is available for our student athletes. Each season, we send out a one call notification to our families. Our coaches are involved talking about the program with their athletes. All information is available on our website and our future lab dates that we've discussed and that were in place for last spring. We're waiting to see if it's possible due to COVID restrictions. Those are in the plans to take place if we are allowed. Our fall season, we had close to three hundred athletes participating this fall. As you know, we had some sports move to fall season too. But the sports that are participating, they're off and running. Our boys soccer are one and two with a win versus Lemonster. Girls soccer is two oh and one with a win and tie tie last night. Versus Shrewsbury. Our boys golf have a record of three and three. Actually, their season is coming to a conclusion tomorrow with their eighth and final match and then their pod. Will playoff will start either Friday or next week and they have a current record of three and three. Boys and girls cross country are two and O with wins versus Lemonster in Westboro and our field hockey is two and O with wins versus Lemonster in Westboro. I do want to say thank you to our Booster Club for continuing support and dedication to our student athletes. Boosters and athletics will continue to work together to support our teams and invest in future upgrades to our fields and facilities. Some of the current projects that are we are working on that were delayed from last year and we're looking to implement again this year. And some projects that may have concluded, one of which is we are continuing to work on our sponsorships and donations for our athletic fields and our indoor facilities. We're continuing to move forward with our multi-sports. We're looking to talk about implementing a strength into this conditioning coach through boosters. Working in partnership to provide strength and condition for all our athletes in and out of season. Goals to launch in April of last season in 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 May, but due to COVID, this program has been postponed, but but we have the goal of starting in the spring of twenty twenty one. We're also, we're working with Flaherty Physical Therapists in fitness, I should say, which is with an injury prevention program. And we are looking to launch a new screening program geared towards injury prevention. Flaherty Physical Therapy was scheduled to work with our boys soccer team and our gymnastics teams last spring. We are looking to pick this back up this year if guidelines allow us to participate. The focus of the screen is to assess any physical limitations that may be predisposed to athlete to an athlete to injury during their season. The primary goal of this program is to teach athletes the importance of year round conditioning to help improve their athletic participation to allow for athletic success. And lastly, our cross country course, which we had completed, upgrades were completed in August. This past summer and the course looks fantastic. And lastly, I have to give a special thanks to those of you who have made this season. Not a normal season and we're under an unprecedented season, but a possibility for all of our student athletes and our coaches. I'd like to thank the central office, regional school committee, Superintendent Martino, Principal Bevan. The administration team at ARHS, our facilities department for their hard work and helping prepare for facilities and practices and games. Jonathan Driscoll, our athletic trainer, our great coaching staff, Susan Burns, our athletic administrative assistant, Keith Lavoy, Mary Ellen Duggan. Dr. Medina and the medical advisory team for all their support and their guidance during this unprecedented time. And our truly outstanding student athletes. So please continue to show your support for these fine young men and women as they finish the fall season. And as we start to transition into our winter athletic season.
Thank you. We have a question, a comment from Paul Bucka.
Thanks, Joan. And Mike, thanks very much for the update and congrats on getting this kind of crazy year off to it, which seems like a pretty good start. Just kind of a comment that's kind of filtered through a lot of our different sort of discussion tonight. You know, this is a this is a tough time for kids and as we're kind of entering the next season of sports. You know, if there's. You know, I I know that I guess I know there's a need for cuts, you know, when too many kids apply for to join a team, but to. You know, if if there's only like a few extras and and it's. It's not that big a deal or it's only a few dollars out of the budget, maybe to buy an extra uniform or two or whatever. You know, rather than rather than cut kids, if there's a way that you could kind of convince some of your coaches that. You know, instead of having a team of twenty this year, you're going to have twenty two and and just kind of suck it up and put up with it for the. For the morale of the students, you know, I would I would really kind of throw my hat in that ring and if there's budget monies that you need. You know, I'd say just let us know. And then secondly, the only other comment I have, you mentioned a couple of different outside resources that the boosters are trying to establish. To kind of come in and I guess interact with our students and and I just want to make sure that you're comfortable that we have all the right protocols in place to evaluate who these people are and. And and you know, before they come in contact with us with our student athletes. Thanks. Again, thanks for the update.
Mike, do you have any comment?
Yeah, just to follow up, if I may, on the first one and hopefully I can answer or just to give a quick update. First and foremost, we want to give every opportunity we can to our student athletes. So we will be looking to do that each and every season. We just have to make sure each and so each season, including fall, had some. Rules and limitations that we just have to abide by, but we can always look outside the box to make sure that we have an opportunity for our kids to participate. Whether it's whether it's on the roster, whether it's another type of position within the team. Or it could be that we look at intermural programs that we could look to have a part to the kids to participate in. So that is top priority is to make sure that we have an opportunity for our kids to participate, whether it's the fall, the winter or the spring. In regards to our programs, we're looking to implement, we had a lot of a lot of of this in place at the end of last year. We're hoping to provide these opportunities for our for our athletes. Going into this year, the goal is to provide, still provide these, but they're going to have to go through, we have to be sure. That we are allowed to have these programs take place under the restrictions that we are in. So the goal is to provide it. But if we cannot abide by the rules and the guidelines that we can to run these programs, we'll just have to postpone it until we have the proper opportunity to do so.
Perfect. Thank you.
Chris Cavino.
Thank you, Joan. Actually, I just wanted to make a a quick comment, not really a question. So I don't live that far from the school. And I I walked, I took the opportunity to walk around the school last week while several different athletic events were occurring and I was. I just really wanted to really send a shout out to the coaches and the students and the referees. I was, as I walked through. The mask compliance was was outstanding. And I think it's because the students really understand that if they want to participate in these activities, which they do want to participate in these activities, they're going to do everything that they can. So that they can continue to take place. And so as I walked around the campus, I noticed that. Everybody was wearing masks, whether they were socially distanced or not. And it was it was really a pleasure to see. And I so I think that that level of compliance that. The coaches and administrators have really imparted upon the students. Is is excellent and the students deserve credit for really complying with with the requirements. So so thank you very much for everything. Thank you.
Okay, and Mike, I'd just like to say, please give our congratulations and to Coach Gavin and Coach Fedak for their. Recognition that they so so deserved as the in their sports that they're in. And I'd like to thank you for your participation tonight and. for your participation tonight. And I know that sometimes we only heard from the athletic director maybe four times a year, winter, fall, spring, and summer, but I think it's very important to have you give us updates. And if there is any time you would like to give us an update and be on the agenda, please let, you know, Superintendent Mart know or Principal Bevan know, because I think it's very valuable and some good comments and questions have been asked tonight. So thank you for your support and giving us your time tonight. We appreciate it.
Thank you very much. And again, thank you for all the support. It's been tremendous.
Okay, thank you. Going on to the next agenda item that we have is the COVID-19 impact on fine and performing arts.
So similar to um, most of our activities out at Algonquin, from athletics to robotics to fine and performing arts. Major changes have been needed. Um, and I just want to compliment Amy Collins, the Department Chair for the Fine and Performing Arts, for her work and kind of reimagining how we can make these experiences happen for our students. Um, and she's one of um, many of our outstanding Algonquin educators who are doing tremendous work um, with our students. And I always, I always say our greatest asset really are our educators, and they're doing, they're working tremendously hard. And and Amy's a great example of that. And tonight she's going to share some of the reimagining that's happening in the Fine and Performing Arts Department.
Greg, I'm going to share my screen and Amy, Amy, if you don't mind, I'll I'll kind of manage the screen and I will take over on the the visual arts part at the end. Okay? So I'm going to get to that right now.
Thank you. Thank you, Sean. Uh, thank you, everyone, for having me here tonight to provide this update for you on the Fine Performing Arts Department. Next slide, Sean. Um, so um, our students, when they returned in the fall, our band, chorus, and orchestra students shared with us how eager they were to make music together. Something that they had really missed during the spring, um, when we were distance learning, we weren't able to actually collaborate together. So that has been our main goal in the past two weeks to to do just that. So right here, you can see our new rehearsal spaces for our band, which is out there on the grass behind the bandroom. And for our chorus groups, um, underneath the overhang by the gold office actually has pretty good acoustics. And um, the kids are enjoying that. Uh, but so we are following the DESE guidelines that were set at the beginning of the school year. Uh, actually, in August, they were set that band and choral students need to sing and play outdoors at 10 feet distancing. So that's why we made the move to um, the outdoors. And when we're not able to go outside due to weather, and we've been pretty fortunate the past two weeks to um, be able to be outside. But there's been a couple of rainy days, and we have plenty to do inside. Things like listening to the music we're working on, analyzing music, and reinforcing some music skills. Go to the next slide, Sean. Um, so.
Really, Amy, I think you have a, um, in the slide deck and you only have your own permissions on it. I don't know if um, either we could skip it, or if you give me permissions that which would take a moment to do.
I'd like to give you permission. Let's see if I can do that.
Apologize, everyone. It's just. If I request access.
I just have to exit full screen. I am on the presentation, so I most likely will be able to do that.
Apologize, everyone.
Maybe if I make you owner. Does that work?
Let's see. Try this again and let's see. I'm sorry, it does not seem like it's working here.
Amy, do you want to share your screen if we make you a co-host? I I think I might have just done it. If we can try it one more time.
Okay.
Thank you, Stephanie.
Oh, there we go. Okay. And Amy, while I'm doing this, if you want to do the next video as well while I'm playing this, that'll expedite the next slide. Okay? So here we go.
Yep, go ahead. All right. So that was a short clip from our symphonic band um, under the direction of Eric Vincent in our outdoor classroom. So um, hybrid scheduling is a challenge for us with our music ensembles because we have half, excuse me, half of the group um, with us at any given time. And the cohorts were not designed for our instrumentation of our ensembles. They were designed by family and last name. So we could have nine trumpets one day and none the next day. And that's, that's complicated in performing um, group works with our students in band and orchestra in chorus, um, because we really are a team and every, every part matters and excuse me, plays an important part. Um, so we've explored the use of flex arrangements, and that was a flex arrangement that you heard by Franz Schubert. It's March Militaire, um, where the parts are doubled, and it's a four-part arrangement opposed to potentially 25 parts. Um, so students are not feeling as exposed um, and being one on a part if they're the only trumpet player there that day. So we've have found good success with the use of these flex arrangements, and the students are be able to, they can learn all the parts, which is really beneficial for um, learning how to play in an ensemble. So we've been experiencing and dabbling with those, and it's been um, working well. On our next slide, you'll see our choral group. Do I have to do it again?
Uh, you may need to. Um, we will try it here. Yeah. So if you can go in and give access again, I apologize.
Sean, did you send me a request access email? Because that is what did it last.
Was worth it last time, so I I think it'll.
This will be worth it, too. The next slide will be our our choral group that's rehearsing in um, the acoustic space of um, the overhang by the athletic and gold office. So that should do it now. This is our chamber choir cohort B.
Okay, we're ready?
Yes, ready. So like I said, that was our chamber choir on a cohort B day. You can see in the video that we do have students streaming in to our ensembles. We actually have students streaming into all of our performing ensembles and all of our visual art classes and drama classes. Um, and Kathy Carminiani was so supportive and wonderful in making sure the students who were involved in the SART program had the ability to fit band and orchestra and chorus in their schedule. And we really, really appreciate that. And I know the students and families appreciated that as well. But what you heard, the chorus um, performing, um, that was When I Rise Up by J. David Moore. But that's, that was a round that you heard, which is is simple, perhaps compared to some of the music we've explored in previous years, but wonderful teaching moments here. And again, um, fit very well with our smaller groups this year due to the cohorts. For students who can feel they can sing in a safe space, um, they're not as exposed. And it's it's a great teaching tool that we've experienced so far with our choral groups. All right, I'm ready for the next one. All right, so um, this is new. Just last week, uh, the Department of Ed updated its guidance for courses requiring additional safety considerations for fall 2020. Uh, the update impacts what I previously mentioned, where band and um, it's actually just band, it's not choral. Um, a choral update yet, it's just band. So this would affect our concert band students and our jazz band students that they can now uh, play indoors at 10 feet distancing with um, masks and or the use of bell covers are encouraged if possible. Spit that spit valves that spit happens with um, our our instruments, particularly our brass instruments, uh, should be emptied onto disposable absorbent pads rather than the floor. So the contents are um, contained. So uh, the district instrumental music teachers were excited to hear this information. The students were excited to hear this information. And we've worked together um, last week with central office to put together an order of bell covers for each of our band students throughout the district. Think of a bell cover as a face mask for the instrument. It covers where the majority of the air comes out of the instrument. And um, the district is funding this through COVID grant funds. Um, it's going to be probably a couple of weeks until the order can um, be um, received by us because this happened in Massachusetts, and I think it's a hot commodity right now. A lot of um, schools are um, trying to purchase these bell covers at this time, but we're eagerly awaiting for them to come in because this is um, a good, good timing because we're shifting into some colder weather. Um, so we perhaps wouldn't have been able to play outdoors any longer um, if if we weren't allowed this new um, guidelines. Uh, when we do move inside with the bell covers, we plan to utilize the auditorium to maximize distancing. That would give us very um, large space for us to um, play safely and definitely more than 10 feet distancing. Moving indoors would also allow our jazz bands to rehearse in our standard evening rehearsal times, which is really important to us and our students. Currently, the jazz bands, because we cannot play inside yet, we don't have the bell covers, and this is a new um, guideline. They're rehearsing after school, and we have to do it times two because of the cohorts and the difficulty of students getting to school for a two o'clock rehearsal. And um, with that, that's outside of our normal time. It it does um, impact students' involvement in other things like clubs and athletics. So we're eager to move to our more standard time in the evening, which has worked well for our students' schedules and all the things that they're um, involved in. And like I said, we're still waiting for an update on um, choral singing. The DESE has not released an update there. So in a typical school year, this is perhaps one of the biggest changes for us. In a typical school year, our ensemble music classes are really driven by a concert calendar of public performances where we have roughly four to five performances a year. So with limits on gatherings and visitors and rehearsing um, in cohorts versus whole ensembles, we do not currently have an upcoming concert like in our standard format. So we're, we are exploring ways to share music. Um, and our students work with the community, and I've reached out to NCAT, and they are willing to um, come into some of our rehearsal spaces and record, just like I did, maybe even outside, um, the works with um, nice video and editing other than my phone and release that to the community, which we really appreciate. Um, the music faculty has also shared for our students, so we're excited to embrace the opportunity here to not necessarily be driven by a concert calendar. I mean, concerts are exciting and students are happy to play together and make music together, but we have some flexibility here now to explore some topics that we may normally not um, really dig into deep because of our concerts and our concert calendars, calendars and the drive for performances. So um, students have been engaged in recent weeks, um, helping develop and share musical topics that they are interested in exploring. You can see some of them up here. These are the themes that have come out of that, that we are planning to explore in addition to playing outside and inside when we move in, but also these um, topics and themes are going to really translate well to remote learning, um, to the remote learner at home, or just, you know, bigger picture moving forward throughout the year and the opportunities we have. And lastly, um, as part of the performance arts, I want to update you um, on the school musical. So typically, the school musical would be next month, um, in November. Um, we're not, this is reimagined this year. Um, so the the musical will be it will be virtual in a virtual format. And we knew it was important to still give our students the opportunity to experience music theater. For a lot of them, this is their, this is their fall sport. This is what they're involved in, and they're very passionate about it. So the production team spent a lot of time designing what could be a good fit for our school for um, performing musical theater in a pandemic, and they came up with this virtual musical theater cabaret. The cabaret will be a collection of rehearsed vocal solos, small group numbers, monologues, and dance numbers. And students are also involved in the tech side of it and will help edit and create the virtual performance. The theme is resilience, hope, and bravery. And there'll be a collection of pieces all in the um, realm of music theater. And we are planning that this will be released in December.
Thank you, Amy. Great job. That was really fun. Um, I can pick it up and and tell the committee a little bit about how the visual arts are responding to the changes that we're we're all responding to. Um, I'll try and keep it brief. The visual arts, uh, I I think the challenges, while significant, aren't quite the same uh, on the same scale as what um, the the performing arts and the our musicians are having to deal with. Um, so our visual artists are are being outfitted with kits on the lower left-hand side. You can see, um, it's basically an art kit that each each student has, uh, they carry with them into and out of class. And they produce their art in school and sometimes, and they will bring it home. Some of the logistical challenges that have emerged uh, are that sharing materials is either not allowed or it, uh, the materials need to be cleaned in between sharing. So this young woman on the right-hand side told me she forgot her kit, so she's using school materials that uh, she had to take from the shelf, but she understood that she'd have to clean it after she was done. One thing that I would not have under had predicted, but has emerged as a challenge, is that the scale of the size of the the artwork that students are producing has to be brought down because they might have to bring it back and forth to home. So if you think of the kind of sizes of um, of art that you typically, that's typically created in a high school art class, it's much larger. You're looking at two feet by three feet big pieces, and that's not really, uh, doesn't travel real well. Additionally, teachers who are providing uh, instruction have the challenges of providing demonstrations, but having to do that at distance from kids, whereas they might have been used to having kids be much more close to them. So here are some examples of teachers adapting and innovating and doing their best. So on the left-hand side, this is Danielle DeChiro. She's uh, one of our art teachers. She teaches ceramics is one of the the topics she teaches. And the camera in the front there, she does use that for live streaming at times, but uh, she uses it primarily to shoot her hands doing the work that the kids in the class uh, need to do, but they they can't crowd around to see her do. On the right-hand side, you see Miss Shepherd. She's one of our, uh, she's our photo teacher. And she is using a document camera. If you can see that, that is shooting an iPad, and I can show you here. It's shooting the iPad, and you can see what the image of the iPad is on the right-hand side. It's her showing how to navigate um, the software, this photo software. So here are students in her classroom and along the top of the the screen there, you can see the students who are at home, who are seeing her navigate this while simultaneously there are students in the room. So this is a fully livestreamed class, and she's using a document camera to show how to navigate the uh, the software. So again, uh, you know, one of our teachers doing their best to adapt, to innovate, and to use um, new tools or or existing tools to provide demonstrations that would have been much easier to do in in person and and right up next to a student, but that's just not the reality. And then I'll I'll finish. Public speaking is one of our uh, is is under the umbrella of our fine arts, and they have have made massive changes too. Luckily, we have a wonderful resource in our Black Box Theater, and that can house many, many students, even at a great deal of social distance. But here's an exercise that I think in a typical year would have been much cozier, much more intimate. And they are doing a kind of an improv exercise here um, at great distance. That's a class that has 40 students in it, taught by two teachers. That's how we still are running it, but they break up into two different classrooms at times. And this room does allow, I think, uh, for for maybe as many as uh, the 20 who would show up on any given day, even in one room, uh, in that one room, because it's so large. But again, they are having to to socially distance. I did not prop these up, but you will see the uh, the spray bottles here in the front. That's that just happened to be there. Every classroom, uh, we use those at the end of every class where the teacher sprays all of the hard surfaces that students have interacted with, and the students in the next class come in and wipe it down, which I didn't make a fine point on earlier, but that's a yet another example of how everybody's pitching in to, you know, maintain this really wonderful experience that we all enjoy. Um, and kids have done a great job of being part of that solution. Okay? So um, that is, I think, the conclusion of our report for the Fine and Performing Arts. I don't know if there are any questions from the committee.
Um, I'd just like to thank Amy.
Um, I'd just like to thank Amy as department chairperson of the fine and performing arts for the time that you spent on this presentation. And also sharing the visual uh with us of of seeing the band, how they're playing. I'm sure that when they all get back together again, the band and the chorus. There's going to be a lot of sounds that I can hear all the way over on where I live. So thank you very much. And Sean, thank you for the wonderful presentation. I think it is shown again how the different departments at Algonquin Regional High School, how they can see, how they can succeed without. With obstacles that are putting forth before them. So please give our thanks to all the staff for the wonderful presentation. And I see that we have a comment or question from Kathleen Holland. Kathleen?
It's the arts. It's my whale house. Excuse me, very much like to commend. Amy and your team. Sorry, I have done lectures all day. Um, I came and saw a band rehearsal the other day. I watched the the stands blow over in the wind. I watched the papers fly into the parking lot. I I could see how straining it would be on your voice to conduct outside. I saw Eric take bouncing out the xylophone, bringing the equipment out. I am so relieved that Desi is going to allow this to come inside. And of course, this is impacting Berkeley, which will go back to school next year. In person only for ensembles. Um, you have touched my heart that the production this year will be on resilience and bravery. I think that that is absolutely what I was asking about before. The opportunity to let this be a time of deepening and rather than a time of scarcity. And I think the arts are so ideal in in creating that type of adaptation and messaging in society. Um, and last semester in the fall, I led a uh recital, I organized and led a recital at Berkeley. Of music therapy students who did songs of resilience. It was deeply moving. And it turned out to be um a real favorite amongst the engineers that were running the the hall. Um, as well as as the people that had attended and participated. It was beautiful. I expect that to be the same. And it is my hope that it will be very, very highly attended because the messaging will be spot on. And um, Mr. Bevan, I'd like to thank you for including the fine arts in the public speaking and having an inclusive net tonight in this report. I found that exciting to see what they were doing and how they were doing it. So thank you. This was like the best part. If it gets any better than this, Greg, well, it'd be terrific, but that was really heartwarming. Thank you.
You're welcome. And thank you, Amy. You did a great job.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Um, Greg, going on to the next item on our agenda. Uh, we have uh Mass Core.
So again, at our September meeting, we had a a brief discussion about Mass Core and um. Algonquin's alignment to the Mass Core. So this evening, Principal Bevan will provide a more detailed update. And while we're waiting for Sean, um, I just want to also thank Amy and and the Fine and Performing Arts Department for their work and. Kathleen, you mentioned, you said it beautifully, that all the hard work to make it happen and the conditions are less than ideal, but. Uh, music is still happening at Algonquin, which is um outstanding.
Yes, it is. And uh luckily, I have no video pieces in, it's not surprisingly, in a mass core update, there's no music and no video on this. Part of the presentation. I apologize, Kathleen. So um, I can share with you. Uh, give you a brief overview of of Mass Core and then I'll share with you. Um, where we are related to Mass Core and 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 even overlay. If you were, if we were to uh be a Mass Core school, how, what percentage of our students are would would meet those criteria? So Mass Core is um is a state recommended program of study published by the uh by Massachusetts Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. It's intended to align high school coursework with college and workforce expectations. My understanding is that it was created with input from many stakeholders, including. Industry experts and 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 folks at the college level giving feedback to uh what kind of skills and abilities and content knowledge students needed to leave high school with that they were not. Um, it was adopted in 2007 and amended in 2018. Um, it's important to note that uh that Mass Core and state and local graduation requirements aren't the same thing. There's overlap and and certainly they are, they are interrelated and interlocked, but they're not the same thing. The state. State graduation requirements are very finite and 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 we meet them, of course. And every school community like our own develops our own enhances this. Creates newer or or elements of um the graduation requirements that reflect their community's values and 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 students must meet those. Uh, that might be in addition to the state, the state level. Mass Core and uh is is my, is a little bit distinct from there in that it it. It's not something we're required to do. And here at Algonquin, we're we're not aligned with uh the Mass Core. Um, for reasons that I think go back um maybe even decades. Um, and so I can tell you a little bit about what that looks like here. Um, and then we can talk about what the implications of this work are. So the Mass Core requirements are are what's here on the screen. Uh, it is that a student graduating um would need to have four years of English. Four years of math, three years of a lab, of lab-based sciences, um, three years of history. Uh, two years of a foreign language. It needs to be the same foreign language. So you can't have like one year of French and one year of Spanish. It needs to be two years of French or two years of Spanish. And it needs to be one year of the, one full year of the arts, which is important, and five additional core courses. The Algonquin uh Regional High School graduation requirements are that a student needs to achieve 110 credits. And those credits must include the following, which um are four years of English, three years of math, science and history. That history needs to be uh US history, uh, needs to include, be inclusive of US history. Two years of health and fitness, five and a half um years of elect, uh, five and a half electives and one half year of an applied arts or an uh fine art. And it one uh digital literacy course and one economics course. Now, if you're not. Um, scoring at home, trying to figure out how does this match to uh to Mass Core. Here is uh, it's a little bit hard. I'm trying to find the best way to reflect this because there are things on the left-hand side here. That are required by Mass Core, but not required by the Algonquin graduation requirements. And then the alternative is also true. Um, there are things that are required by our graduation requirements that are not required by Mass Core. So I'm going to dig into that here. So the Mass Core requires four years of of math, whereas uh Algonquin requires just three. Um, Mass Core requires two years of a foreign language. We do not um for a graduation requirement. And the Mass Core requires uh one year of the arts. Our graduation requirements require two years of health and fitness. That's not reflected in Mass Core and one half a year of applied arts or fine arts, even though they require a full year of the arts. Um, on the other side in Mass Core, um, we also require one year of uh in our hand buckets called Computer Essentials. What that course is, is digital literacy in the building and one uh half year of economics. Okay? So to illustrate um how our students progress through um the course of study and what uh. Even though we're not a mass course uh school, I, we can overlay how our students perform in the courses they take. Um, against what Mass Core requires, and it gives you a bit of a sense for how close we are or not close to fulfilling Mass Core. So if you look at the class of 2019, uh, and I need to, before I begin, I need to thank Lisa Connery, who might be out there somewhere watching this. For preparing this data. It's, it was very helpful um to and gave me a really good sense for what uh, what is Mass Core? Uh, what would it mean for us um if we were to match it against uh our graduation requirements? In 2019, we had 368 students in that graduating class. Um, 362 graduated on time, four went on to postgraduate work. Um, and two did not graduate. Of those 362 students who graduated, 61% um fulfilled the Mass Core. Again, it wasn't a requirement. It just, if you were to match the Mass Core requirements against the courses they took. Without having tried, they would have already completed that. Um, and of those, worth noting in this sub-bullet, 100% of those students took four years of math. So that notion that math, um, our graduation requirement is three years of math. And in Mass Core, it's four years of math. Effectively, all of our kids, at least in 2019, and I don't imagine any other years all that different. Are k- are taking four years of math because uh they won't get into college if they're not, and many of our kids are are eager to. Position themselves to get into the college of their choice. Thirty uh 39% would uh, if you were to just take again, their, the courses, the course of study that they completed. And matched against the Mass Core requirements, 39% of them would not have ta- would not have met those requirements. So if you dig into what that 39% represents, here's what it looks like. So of the the uh. The students whose course of study would not meet, meet the um the requirements of Mass Core. This is where they were were not in compliance effectively. They either didn't have two years of a foreign language and that was only 4.4%. And of those uh students, I think it was only 16. I can't remember the exact mathematics of it. I think 16 students. Did not take two years of foreign language. 100% of those students are students um. Who are on IEPs for a learning disability. And so that 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 has two impacts that are worth noting. One is that that uh many of those students have language-based disabilities and and for those students. Gaining a foreign language is a great challenge and in many schools, including our own, that those requirements are waived. Um, additionally, if you're a student with a disability, one of the blocks in your um, in your, in your. Days courses are consumed by the special education services that you receive, which prevents um. The opportunity for another course. So effectively, there's an opportunity cost for gaining the the special education. Supports that you need and it comes at the expense of foreign language. In um, the remainder, um, are are students who did not meet the the full year of the fine and performing arts requirement of Mass Core. Um, so of those students, um, 18%, about half of them missed both semesters and and completed that arts requirement, which is part of our graduation requirement. Through probably the applied arts. Um, so perhaps they took another course like um wood technology or metals. Um, we have many wonderful applied arts courses, um, but they did not use the finer performing arts classes to complete. Um, the arts requirement. Or they're missing one semester. Again, um, they, they would need a full year of a finer performing arts uh in total. And half of our kids only have one semester and half of our kids have none. Um, and complete that fine, that arts requirement through the applied arts. Okay? Um, that is just kind of the overview of what Mass Core is, um, what it's designed to do. Um, how our, it's, it's pretty clear to me and I'm I'm new to this role, of course, as you know, and see every school community. Uh, develops their graduation requirements. Um, it's kind of a reflection of an evolution over decades of analysis and of adjusting and and change. Um, and often they actually reflect the values of their community, or they should. Um, and I think that's true of ours. Um, and that has happened for whatever reason, independent of the Mass Core, which is not a requirement, as I said earlier, um, but is a recommendation. So I, that is a lot of information very quickly. Um, and certainly I imagine you might have some questions and I'm happy to go backwards to any of those slides. But I hope that kind of gives a sense for what Mass Core is and where we match up or don't match up to Mass Core.
Okay, Paul Buck has the first question or comment.
Thank you, Joan. Sean, thanks very much for that. You know, it's about my 15th year on the school committee. I think it was the first time I've seen. A comprehensive presentation about this. Uh, my real question, I I think if if I understood some of our earlier discussions. If you don't complete all the Mass Core requirements, is it correct that? That the state's uh college system won't accept a a graduate who doesn't have the Mass Core requirements completed? And if the answer to that is yes, um, you know, do we have every fail-safe possible within our guidance organization to make sure that? That these kids understand that they've kind of limited their selections, uh, you know, particularly now where we're, where money is tight for so many different families. Seems, it seems like that's a, that's kind of a a big one in in my mind anyway.
So. No, it's a, it's a good question, uh, Mr. Buck. I I think, um, I don't think our kids are limiting their their um, their options. I think, um. I don't think they uh, they're not getting, meeting this Mass Core designation, which is really the school's designation. It's not a, one kid is a Mass Core kid and another kid is not. It's really the designation the school would achieve um for having that as a requirement. And we are getting many, many of our kids into, in some of the best schools in the country. So I don't, I don't think that that's. The issue. The students who are eager to get into the, into those schools are choosing a course of study that allows them to do that. I think if I had to, if I'm looking at this data correctly, if I'm understanding my conversations with some of the other people in the building. I think our. I think our, our courses, our our program of studies rec- reflects a decades-long strength in in business. And the applied arts uh offers really wonderful pathways for students to explore. Uh, the applied arts, including uh these business, business pathways. We have a very strong DECA program. We have a really robust business. Um, uh, department um that is staffed very well and with really wonderful teachers and and much to a. A a higher level than in most schools because that reflects, I think, what our community has, has uh, has valued for a very long time. Um, and so I think that that has come at the expense of us not, not um. Meeting the needs of this or meeting the requirements of the of the Mass Core. And to do that would require some adjusting of of our requirements, our our graduation requirements to to make it do that. Um, and doing that would come at at the expense of one of the other departments. So um, I I'm sorry, I'm kind of rambling here, but I.
If you could dumb it down for me, Sean, let me ask it something simpler. If I'm one of those 30%. Yeah. Graduated from Algonquin and I didn't hit the Mass Core requirements. Could I be accepted at Framingham State University or UMass Boston or UMass Amherst or Worcester State College?
Um, I think so. I I I think if I'm understanding you correctly, Paul, you, the, that student, if you've met your, because you've probably taken four years of math. So you've met the the UMass standards and probably instead of taking a course like uh music history, maybe you took a course. That that was um, that was business oriented and that positions you for a a course of study in business. And that makes you more attractive for the college of your choice. So you've, you've kind of positioned yourself. Um, in by meeting uh our graduation requirements, but not Mass Core. And then you, that makes you a candidate, a stronger candidate even perhaps at a school that values the courses you did decide to take.
Including the state schools.
That's my understanding.
Okay, alright, thanks.
Mr. Bevan, do you mind if I pipe in here?
Sure, yeah.
Okay, um, Mr. Buck, I just looked up and in order to be able to get into UMass Amherst, for example. You need four uni- four years of English, four of math, three of the natural science labs. Um, two social sciences, two languages, uh, two years of language of the same language. And then two electives, whether, two years of an elective, whether they're from arts and humanities, it could be computer science. So they're not necessarily aligning that to the Mass Core. But, and we've had our students very successful in getting into these types of colleges.
Okay, but the, but the language requirement, for example, I think you said two years of the same language. And that's not one of our graduation requirements. So if I didn't do that and I graduated from Algonquin, are you telling me I can't get into UMass?
Um, Mr. Buck, that is definitely, while it's not one of our graduation requirements, it certainly is something that is stressed to incoming freshmen. And every year, our guidance counselors are talking to them, to our students about what they need for those courses. In order to get into colleges and, and you know, I've been there for 20 years and they've been talking about minimum two years, if not more. And the only students that we find.
Uh, thank you, Kathy. That that data I showed earlier for a class of 300 and almost 370 kids, 16 didn't achieve the two years of foreign language. And they were provided with um, I think waivers to to do so.
Okay, alright.
The percentage of kids who are not meeting that are very low.
So you guys think we have all the fail-safes in place to make sure that, you know, seniors aren't all of a sudden surprised that they were allowed to take classes that keep them out of. The Massachusetts State School System. We've got, we've got all the things in place.
Correct, yes, yeah.
That's, thank you very much.
Okay, Karen Ayers?
Karen, you have your hand, right?
I was on mute, sorry. I had did some similar work and research when I was working in Dudley Charlton and assessing these types of things for Shepherd Hill Regional High School and looking at various other high schools and comparing them to ours. And I would say we were in a similar situation in the fact that it's a very college prep-oriented high school. And there's nothing wrong with that. So if I just brought up Mass Corps right here on my website, and what it says is, "Mass Corps is a state-recommended rigorous program of study that aligns high school coursework with college and workforce expectations." The recommended program of studies includes," and then it goes through what Mr. Bevan had put down. Additionally, though, what it does say is, "The additional learning opportunities include AP classes, which we do well with, obviously, dual enrollment and early college classwork," which I'm not really sure if we have a lot at Algonquin about dual enrollment opportunities or early college with local community college programs. Senior project and capstone projects where, that's definitely something, I think, the, kind of the nail on the head is these 21st century skills that we want our kids to have, whether they're going into work or college. The ability to earn high school, college credit while in high school and like work-based learning in, you know, kind of internships or civic opportunity to engage with the community and those types of things. So I think the coursework is solid, obviously. And as Mrs. Carmignani had mentioned, you know, I know from my kiddo's experience and all the, all the work that I had done in my previous district, we prep our kids for college and we prep, prep, prep. But what about the other experiences and experiences that whole child? And I think that might be where we need to kind of look at those capstone projects, those work-based learning experiences and how, and I really don't want to say we have to fit, we have to make one more requirement, right? But how can we look at that, is I guess my, my comment, really?
Yeah, I think, I think a good starting point is to find out who's doing it well and with integrity and getting good results and having kids enjoy it, you know, and trying to find out for my fellow, you know, principals, who's doing that, the things that we're not doing and that we could be doing. I think I can, I can look into that and get you an update on that sometime soon.
Karen, I would also echo that last year I was able to bring up, you know, from working with Dudley Charlton, I was able to bring some of your work forward to our applied arts department and just showing them, you know, here's what this school's doing with their capstone requirements, how are we doing? And so we were able to kind of really, they're starting to really look into that program and seeing how that they, how they can kind of do those things. You know, we're definitely at its infancy, but I think they have a lot of those ideas.
Okay, thank you. I don't see any other comments or questions from any of the board members. Thank you very much for the great overview on the Mass Corps. And I think it's really enlightened us in what we have and what we can look into. So thank you very much. Thank you for everybody's input. The next item that we have on our agenda is the legislative update. And Greg had given us, I think it's passed, there was a survey that you could fill out and the link was provided, but it had to be done by October sixteenth. So the time has passed for that. Is there any update on that, Greg?
Sure, so just a quick comment on the Student Opportunity Act. It's been a year since that was signed into law by Governor Baker. And part of that law was really to provide additional funding to education, 1.2 billion over a four-year period. And part of the law also talked about kind of reevaluating the Chapter Seventy program, which is the funding mechanism, and in particular, a component around hold harmless. So we have our local contribution requirement and the maximum the community is required to contribute is eighty-two point five percent, and then state aid is seventeen point five percent. So there is a study looking at, to change that, to no longer hold districts harmless to that eighty-two point five percent contribution rate, which could mean that the communities of North Row and South Row would receive less Chapter Seventy funding. So it's just something we should keep on our radar. Also, just a general comment, too, that the governor released his revised version of the budget for FY21. And we, we have seen that there is a slight reduction in a state aid. They are holding it to FY20 numbers. And also, there is some discussion that regional transportation reimbursement for special education students was supposed to be reimbursed in FY21. And there is some discussion that that will not happen. So again, a couple of items that will impact our overall budget planning. But again, based on the projections of the financial team, I think we are still in good standing at this point.
Okay, thank you for that update. And we'll keep this up on our radar as we have this on our agenda items legislative update. So thanks, Greg, for all that information and keep it in the forefront. The next item we have is distribution of 2020, 2021 department presentation. And I think, Mr. Sean Bevan, you have, you'll be giving us that schedule. I think you're muted.
You'd think I'd learned seven months in and I'm still, here we go, okay. So here's our schedule, and I confirmed this with my department heads. We'll have Health and Fitness by Brian Mossen in November, Guidance in December, Science, Word Languages, Math, Social Studies, Fine and Performing Arts, and the Applied Arts. So this is the same order that we've kept in years past. And in looking back at the notes from the spring, there were ones that we missed in, with school closure. We're picking up where we left off, and this is what it will look like.
Okay, thank you very much. And seeing that we have Fine and Performing Arts in May, we may be able to attend, hopefully, a concert or go outside and listen to them all together. Get all the, get the different woodwind percussion, get them all together. I think they'd love that, if we can do it, cross our fingers. Thank you. Any questions or comments from board members on that? Present on the schedule for the departments? Okay, seeing none, we'll go on to the next, which is the MASC, MASs Joint Conference. We have two things, review of resolutions and appointment of delegate and alternate. I'm not going to read them. I did it North Row, K to eight, but I think there's like ten resolutions. I know that Greg also gave us a link on a Google form to each of us to put our feelings on those. I think it's ten or twelve resolutions. And Greg had said that this would help our delegate or the alternate delegate in their position when they go for the meeting when that is done. Any questions on the resolutions? And Greg, do I have to read, would you like me to read them out or no?
That'd be the will of the committee.
The will of the committee? If anybody would like me to read the resolutions, just even, I'm not going to read them all, but I'll read the titles. Just raise your hand. I'm glad that everybody can read them. So thank you very much. I think that we'll have an update at the November meeting and that delegate or alternate delegate can give us a report back. So going on to the next one is the appointment of delegate and the alternate. That's what we're going to be voting in tonight. I have heard from Kathleen Howland that she would like to be the delegate. She said that, that she enjoyed, she was the delegate last year and that she really enjoyed it, and she would like to continue in that capacity. So is there anyone else that would like to serve as the delegate or the alternate delegate at the conference, which is going to be on November the seventh, 2020? And it is a virtual one. Is there anyone that would like to be the delegate besides Kathleen Howland? Okay, seeing none, could I have a motion to nominate Kathleen Howland as our delegate to the MASC, MASs Conference on November?
Madam Chair?
Yes, Dan.
I'm sorry, I had my hand up.
I'm sorry.
I was trying to do the right thing. Yes, I would, I would make that motion for Kathleen. I'd also asked that, so, you know, you didn't read any of them, which is fine. The link is, is there for everyone to read each of the resolutions. I think it's been our practice in the past that we have not advised our delegate to vote on these matters. In the event that there is a consensus on any of the resolutions to actually vote in support of it, then I would ask that we have a, that a subsequent agenda item be added where that resolution, any resolution, because I've read through them and I'm actually shocked at many of them, but that that resolution be read in its entirety in a, in an open meeting if there is a consensus to vote in the affirmative on any of them. So, but with that, I definitely would make a, make a motion that Ms. Howland be our delegate.
Okay, so there is a motion by Dan for Kathleen to be, Howland to be our delegate. Is there a second?
Second to that.
Second by Paul Bucka. Dan, can I ask you a clarification? You said subsequent meeting, so you mean, because our next meeting will be after the conference. So if something-
So then I would ask that if, if there is a, so, you know, we're all asked to go in to that forum and look at all of the different resolutions. And if there is a majority of members that want to have our delegate vote in the affirmative on any of them, noting that our practice has not been that in the past, but if it is going to be that, then, then I would suggest a, you know, we have a special meeting designated to just that item so that the public knows what this committee is asking its delegate to vote in the affirmative on. Now, we, again, we may not have that, and there wouldn't be a need for that. But in the event that there is, I think it's important enough that, you know, the public understand what we're asking our delegate to do.
Okay, so I don't know if we have a time when the members, when there's a deadline for that Google form to be completed, so, Greg?
Yeah, so the goal was to have that data for this meeting to discuss so that we could, we could talk about if there were consensus resolutions that we'd want to ask our delegate to support or not support. But I don't believe we have enough information to make, to have that discussion at this point.
Okay, so would we want to put on a deadline of everybody, give them a week? No, there probably wouldn't be enough time, to do it by this, by Saturday? To look at the form, fill it out, who wants to fill it out? And then we could take a look at it, Greg, and then see if we would have to have a special Zoom meeting to look at those resolutions before November seventh?
I mean, to Dan's point, in the past, our past practice, as we've, you know, I think over my six years, you know, serving on the committee, there's been a couple of different methods for looking at these resolutions. I think in the past couple of years, a delegate was voted and the delegate attended the delegation assembly with the idea of listening and learning and hearing what other committee members were, were thinking about. And I'll just speak the wise words of Kathleen Polczko, that these resolutions take many years to become something. So it won't be the first time or the last time that the committee will have an opportunity to weigh on these resolutions.
Yeah, and I'll actually also chime in. So having been to many of these sessions, what, what you have in front of you right now is controversial as a 10% chance that it is actually going to move through the delegate assembly and become, become the, the, and the wording will be what ends up being the final wording. So I would not suggest that we, as a committee, spend a terrible amount of time on it because whoever our delegate is, assuming it's Kathleen, goes to the, goes, goes to the delegate assembly. There's going to be so much discussion on the floor that what Kathleen ends up voting on is not going to look at all like what it is that we're seeing right now in front of us. So that's why I think it's important for us to give Kathleen the, you know, sort of our, our- Sorry, am I still there?
Yes, you're still here.
Okay, sorry, I heard a thing. So to give her, so Dan, if you have any concerns, then I would forward them to Kathleen. If, I mean, if anybody has any concerns, I would forward them to Kathleen. But in terms of, you know, what Kathleen's going to end up voting on, it's not at all going to look like what we see in front of us. So I, I would not spend a lot of time on it.
Okay, so how about if we just, you know, just have everybody try to finish it? If you want to do it, it's not mandatory. Do the survey, look at the resolutions, put your comments in by the thirty-first, and then Greg will give that information to the delegate and the alternate delegate. How's that? And then November meeting, Dan, you know, if it's Kathleen, she'll come back and report to us in November. And then we can, without doing a special meeting, okay?
That, that makes sense. Kathleen, do you recall voting on things last year?
I was not the delegate last year.
No, 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 the other Kathleen.
Oh, sorry.
I did not participate in the voting. I don't think I was an official delegate. Was it not you, Kathleen?
It was me.
Yeah, I think it was Sean.
Yes.
Sean, okay.
Yeah, and actually, we didn't really have any discussion ahead of time about any of it. I think I brought up the idea of a Google form at that time just to understand the will of the committee. But, and then I was called away and was not able to attend.
Okay, so do we agree that we will try to finish the Google form that was sent out? And it was by the suggestion of Sean Ashay. Try to finish it by October thirty-first, and then Greg and his staff will then send it to the delegate and the alternate delegate for their review. How's that? Okay? All right, so we have a motion on, what?
Does, does that motion need a second then, or was that already seconded?
It was seconded by Paul Bucka. That was for the delegate. So we have, this is roll call vote for Kathleen Howland to be our delegate to the MAS, SMASC Conference. Karen Ayers?
Yes.
Paul Bucka?
Yes.
Chris Covino?
Yes.
Paul Desmond?
Yep.
Kathleen Howland?
Yes.
Kathy Key?
Yes.
Dan Kalenda?
Yes.
Sean Ashay?
Yes.
Kathleen Polczko?
Yes.
And myself, yes, and it passes unanimous. Congratulations, Kathleen Howland. And there will be a paper that, Greg, your office will submit tomorrow with Kathleen Howland's name. We need an alternate delegate that was on the form. Is there anyone who would like to be the alternate delegate? Is it just one day? Yes. What's the time?
It's Saturday, November seventh at one o'clock, and it's virtual.
And like one to what?
They do not give an end time.
Oh, it could be six hours.
I'll do it. I'll do an alternate. Okay, do I have a motion, an nomination? So moved by Paul Bucka, seconded?
Second, Paul Desmond.
Paul Desmond, second. That is Kathy Key to be the alternate. Roll call vote. Karen Ayers?
Yes.
Paul Bucka?
Yes.
Chris Covino?
Yes.
Paul Desmond?
Yes.
Kathleen Howland?
Yes.
Kathy Key?
Yes, I have my hand in Jenny Packett.
Good girl. Dan Kalenda?
Yes.
Sean Ashay?
Yes.
Kathleen Polczko?
Yes.
And myself, yes, and it passes. And myself, yes, and it passes, uh, unanimous. There was something else that was the MAS C annual meeting keynote event that is Saturday, November 7th, 9:45 to 10, to 11:30. And that's where the delegate assembly follows after at 1 o'clock. And, uh, it's been, the featured speaker is gonna be a senior director from Educational Equity Brookline Public Schools Culture Proficiency Coach. Understanding connection between cultural proficiency and equity. And that is the keynote speaker. Okay? So anybody who wants to sign up, Greg, they can contact your officer, Cheryl Lepary, if they want to sign up to attend, correct?
That is accurate.
Okay. All right, going on to the next item on our agenda is the Coalition of, for Equity Update.
So I'm pleased to share with the committee that we have, um, organized our Coalition for Equity and I will have Rota Webb provide a brief update.
Um, so the Coalition for Equity had its first meeting on Thursday, October the 8th. And as a reminder, the Coalition's charge is to build community partnership focused on equity issues in our districts. Create the conditions for courageous conversations to support collaboratively learning about inequality and identify and develop resources to support learning and action. Uh, we had about 79 statements of interest that were submitted to be part of the Coalition, which is an indication of the high level of interest in the work in our district. And the Coalition is formed by 29 members of diverse, uh, backgrounds and also journeys with regards cultural responsive teaching, um, and equity. Uh, we have different stakeholders like, uh, community members, educators, administrators, um, and from different fields also, and as well as three students and an alumni. So we look forward to giving you updates. Our next meeting is on November 12th. And I believe we will be, um, providing updates on a monthly basis.
Okay, thank you. Any questions or comments from board members? And, um, serving on this is, we have Kathleen, the, the school community members are, um, Rota, who are the school community members serving?
Uh, school commen- uh, committee members serving from, um, the, the region is Kathleen Pletchko.
And Kathleen Howland.
Okay.
Thank you. Uh, thank you to both, uh, both of you for serving on this, uh, committee and very worthwhile one. Thank you very much. And we look forward, Rota, to your updates as the time, as the year goes by. Uh, the next item that we have is the implementation of a short-term study group for mascot review. As many of you know that uh, this has come up at many times and this did, uh, this topic came up in the springtime. And, uh, now that we're back into school and we have a nice rhythm here going, um, we're talking with Greg, we thought it would be a good, um, idea to begin a study group, uh, to look at the mascot. So in talking to Greg, I came up with something that it is a study group, something that, almost like the, uh, formation of the Coalition for Equity, that if we had a good representation of people across the community coming, uh, to serve on this. I put that it was short-term because I think that we have to identify this, um, quickly. Um, in the timeline, even though it's a short-term, it would take us all the way into March and April. And, uh, but there is flexibility in those, in those times because it depends upon so many different variables, but this was just something I wanted to pro- propose. And on the short-term study group, uh, I look for it to be composed of 14 members. It would be two regional school committee members, one from Northboro, one for Southboro. And that would be chosen by the consensus of our group. It would be the athletic director and it would be five members from the Coalition for Equity Working Group. Um, Mr. Sean Bevan, uh, principal of, uh, the school would be the chair of it. And then, um, I proposed that he, along with his, uh, choose the following, um, five members who would be on that. Uh, it would be, uh, one faculty member, one APTO member, one booster club member, one ARHS student athlete, and one ARHS student government or Harbinger student to be on that. And when this has come out, I have, uh, received, uh, interest from two members, one from Northboro and Southboro that would like to serve on this. I've heard from Sean O'Shea, who would like to serve on it from Northboro and Paul Desmond from Southboro. So I didn't know if there were any other members that wanted to, to serve on it. I don't think we have to have a vote, but it would just be a consensus. And so now I'd like to open this up for discussion on how you feel about this mascot review. Kathleen Highland, I see your hand raised. And then Paul Bucka.
Yes, um, I read about the, um, reference to tomahawks at the front of the handbook, uh, recently. And I'm wondering why that is different than the mascot and if the, if that issue of the name tomahawks would be addressed in this review.
Greg?
So Kathleen, I can speak to that. So the, the symbol that we are talking about is the tomahawk. Um, that is, that is considered the Algonquin mascot. So that is what would be reviewed, Kathleen.
Is it not available to look at, uh, the name of the school or in that regard?
So we did meet with the petitioners, um, last, uh, spring to get clarity around what, again, exactly what was being asked of, um, the school committee. And, um, Kathleen Pletchko and Chairperson Kathy Key, uh, were part of that conversation. And Kathleen, do you want to just talk a little bit about what we, um, were able to bring to clarity?
Sure. So, um, I think that the, the petitioners, uh, were most concerned about the, um, I will say the co-opting of culture and the fact that the mascot, mascot, which is a tomahawk, uh, uh, connotated, had negative connotations for, um, for, uh, indigenous people. It, it, uh, they didn't like the fact that it, it seemed to, even though those of us who have been doing this a long time and those of us who have been well-educated understand that the tomahawk is actually a tool and it's a tool used by the indigenous people. Um, their concern was that it looked more like a weapon and that it would have a negative connotation in terms of violence, et cetera. So that was their main concern. So that's why that's the, the topic that we decided to, um, to, to tackle first and, um, and, and just sort of be the start of a very, uh, long discussion about just lots of different things about equity on many fronts.
I think that Mary Goodnow's grave so close to the high school and the use of tomahawks has always seemed contraindicated. I know that First Parish in town is looking to have a reconciliation ceremony for the 275th anniversary of the parish with the Nip Monks who were, um, ousted from the community when, when we as whites took over. Um, and there's much work to do in this, all the isms, isms now of racism and sexism, they all need to be unpacked, uh, with a compassionate, uh, with a compassionate heart, a compassionate voice. And so I'm challenged that the, the name tomahawks, um, and little tom, little tiny hawks, I've found, I find really sad and offensive myself. Um, so I'm just wondering why it's not a bundle. I understand that they're asking for that, but it would seem that we could be more than their ask.
Okay, thank you, Kathleen. Uh, Paul Bucka.
Thanks, Joan. Uh, you know, just to Kathleen's last comment, my guess is if, if tomahawks as a mascot goes away, then any derivative of tomahawks, like little tomahawks or whatever it is that, you know, that we've, we've, those sorts of things are, are probably involved. I, I think the, the concern, one of the concerns I had was that, was the word Algonquin gonna be kind of part of this as well. And it seems like that's, uh, excluded from this study group and I'm, I'm kind of fine with that, but. And then I also just wanted to comment and congratulate Joan on, it looks like a, a well-thought-out plan here with a, with very good representation of, of a cross-section of our community. Um, I'm glad we're, we are in fact finally taking this up and, and I think it's, uh, uh, I'm looking forward to the, to the options and the recommendations.
Thanks, Paul. Uh, Dan Kalenda.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I, we just can't all, we, we cannot forget ignorism. Uh, ignorance-ism either. So, um, you know, I, I think there's, there's, it clearly there's uh, uh, passionate discussions about these things, uh, which is fine. We don't want people to decide things based on emotion or ignorance. We want them to decide, you know, based on, you know, fact and truth and there was, um, there was actually, you know, people may not be aware that this very issue was discussed and researched in depth not that long ago. Um, there was a, a group that consisted of none other than, uh, John Wilson, who, um, you know, recently passed and, uh, was a graduate of Algonquin and uh, the town moderator in Southboro for, for a very long time. And, you know, so, you know, people should actually take a look at the research that was done not that long ago. So I understand this has now come up again. Um, but, you know, uh, I, I hope, Joan, that everything that was done before that analyzed how the name of the school and the mascot came into being, um, is brought to the attention of this group as well. So that, you know, they have actual fact to go on as to what, you know, the, um, you know, how the, again, how the name and the mascot came into being. Um, which to my understanding was completely out of, uh, respect and had nothing to do with, uh, racism of any kind. So, um, I hope that's, can, that information can be shared with the committee. Members may have no idea that this was actually done recently. Um, and then members of the study group, you know, should be provided that as well. Um, if their opinions, uh, you know, have changed since then, great, let's hear those too. All right, but I just want to make sure that ignorance does not, um, you know, lead the emotional discussion, but actual fact and the research that was pre- previously done, um, helps drive this. There is, there is decades of, um, you know, students that have graduated from this high school who have great reverence for, uh, the Native American community, the name of their school and the mascot, which is a tool. I don't see people, I don't see students running around, um, you know, uh, you know, committing violent acts with, uh, with a tool. I don't see any of the things that some appear to be, uh, you know, behind the, the, the meaning of the, of the, of the mascot or the name of the school. So, um, hopefully all of that history is taken into consideration when the study group gets together. And as Paul said, I will look forward to the results of that and a robust discussion then when that comes up.
Uh, and in response to your question, Dan, um, when this first came up, I think like in the spring and when we were hearing from the different groups, I know from my tenure on, uh, the school committee, it was, it first came to light in my tenure in 1994. And there was a whole study that was done, um, on it and about the Algonquin name and reaching out to the Algonquin tribes. So I did bring that, um, timeline and I did share it with Greg. So I'm sure Greg will share that with this, with the study group. And I think it is, it is reach, uh, rich history just to go over it and see how the times that this has been studied. And I think even talking to Greg, I, Greg, I said that, you know, even during, uh, Charles Gabron's, uh, and Christine Johnson's, uh, tenure as superintendent, it has come up at different times and they've addressed it. So I think that that history is important and I'm sure Greg will share that with the committee.
Thank you, Joan.
Okay, uh, Sean O'Shea.
Yeah, I was just.
Joan, can I just make one comment, uh, real quickly? So we have done a lot of research and, and have put a timeline together with resources that, um, again, will be shared with the study group as well as the committee.
Okay, thank you, Greg. Sean?
He took the words out of my mouth. I was just gonna say that, uh, when meeting with the petitioners, a, uh, a quite extensive Google Doc with, um, like even Harbinger articles and articles going back and, uh, committee articles going back years, uh, is being compiled for the group to look at. And, and I think, um, you know, another good point to bring up is, it's not just, uh, it, so what was the intent? And how can we bring that forward and, and have a discussion? But also how it's implemented now, you know, I think some, some feedback about, um, you know, some maybe traditions starting freshman year and so on that were maybe not in the best light, uh, bringing it to the best light, uh, had started. And I know Principal Bevan was looking at those. So I think it's, it's just kind of, uh, you, you know, doing the research and, uh, and seeing not just how it was, uh, discussed at the time, but how it's been practiced now and where do we want it to go in the future. So, uh, you know, and, and in terms of the name, uh, of the school Algonquin, I think it was very, um, impactful to also hear from the, uh, petitioners and the people, uh, participating about like not losing history. And, um, and not, uh, sweeping away, say, the Algonquin name because that could just, um, um, you know, take that focus off of, um, off of, uh, an important part of history and making sure where where, where in the school that is also kept alive, uh, whether it's in history classes or so on. So I think it, um, the committee will be able to, um, you know, discuss a lot and bring a lot back.
Thank you, Sean. Uh, Greg, a question to you, because this proposal I gave to you and, um, have you talked to, uh, Principal Bevan about it? And is this something that he feels that he can take on at this time with tentative dates to make this, uh, a short-term study group?
So I have had conversations with Principal Bevan, but I also want to acknowledge that this is Principal Bevan's first year as a principal of the school. So this is, this is quite an undertaking and, you know, the central office leadership, ship team will support him. And it's not his work, it's our work. So, and these efforts. And.
Okay, so.
I would say, I, I look forward to it. I, it's, uh, it's important and, um, I, I look forward to keeping everybody updated on it and I'll work closely with Greg, uh, and I know I'll be well-supported. It's a, 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 even if I don't have the names on, on who will be comprised on this group, um, I, um, the, the titles alone indicate it's gonna be a really group, great group to work with.
Uh, yeah, and so thank you for taking this on, uh, Sean. And notice that in the timeline, not, no, nothing is a definite date. I mean, because there's so many variables that are happening. But if you go down to March 2021, April, I think those things are something that'll be coming back to us, which will be recommendations. You know, your recommendations on the three bullets, the mascot, the timeline for implementation, and definitely the cost associated with the implementation. Uh, maybe you can only do one or two of these. If you can do all three, that would be great, but this is, this is your committee, your study group, and it's just a template to follow. And if you think that things have to be added on to it, you know that you have that direction and to always, you know, go through Greg through that to do it.
I look forward to it.
Okay, so, um, Kathleen, do you have another comment or is the hand just not lowered? Kathleen Highland?
It's just not lowered.
Okay, so, uh, it's just a consensus unless somebody thinks we should make it into a motion, but I had interest from Sean O'Shea for Northboro and Paul Desmond from Southboro. How do people feel of those two members serving on this study group?
Great choices.
Okay, if there is any, if there isn't any other further discussion, just raise your hand if you'd like to be heard or if you, if you felt you wanted to serve on to this study group. Okay, seeing there aren't any hands raised, then I think that we have our two members from the region to serve on this study group. So Paul Desmond and Sean O'Shea, thank you for offering, as every member does in any of these with a Coalition for Equity and for any of these study groups, it's most helpful. And even Kathleen, as you have served on the, uh, Fine and Performing Arts Study Group and then also, um, as our delegate. So thank you to everybody and Kathy Key for serving in those capacities. Love to share the leadership. Thank you.
Joan, if I could.
Yes?
There's a couple of audience members that have raised. There's a couple of audience members that have raised their hands. I don't know whether we want to give them some guidance as to when they'll be allowed to talk or, or, or what. But there's at least a couple out there that I think have raised their hands as a result of this past conversation.
It would be the consensus of the group. If you want to take the, see if there's some audience members or if you want to wait until we get to audience sharing, which is three sections away. Greg, what is your recommendation?
I would recommend that I believe their comments are on this topic. So I think it's connected to, it would make sense to hear them now. And recognizing the, the participants are part of the Students for Justice and also one of the members is part of the Coalition for Equity.
Okay, so board members, raise your hands if you're in opposition to implementing a audience sharing right now. If you're in opposition to it.
I think they should be heard.
Okay, thank you, Chris. All right, there is, there aren't any hands in, in opposition. So Greg, can you elevate them at this time?
Just going to stop sharing my screen and, and then, so we're going to ask the audience members to state their name and their address. And we will promote people to speak one at a time.
Okay, and just as to reiterate what I said at the beginning during this audience sharing, we look to hear forward to your comments and concerns. But I would like to suggest that we limit it to three minutes. If you have a longer statement to be read, more than three minutes, please send it to the RSC email website and then I will share it out with all the members. And remember those audience members that are sharing that this is not a time in which we will debate or discuss the concerns raised. We are here in the listening mode. And three minutes for each participant.
Hi, my name is Sarah. I believe you asked me to state my address. It's 130 Madison Road, Northborough. I'm on the District's Coalition for Equity and I'm a senior at the high school. I just wanted to point out something. On behalf of the petitioners for Students for Justice, I believe that we were misquoted earlier by Kathleen, Kathleen Palucchio. She said that our main point as the petitioners was that we saw the tomahawk as a violent weapon that misrepresented Native Americans. I just wanted to point out that that was not our main statement and that our main statement was that the symbol of the tomahawk is simply not ours to use. So I would like you guys to take that into consideration as we move forward.
Thank you.
And next. So the next member I will have to promote to a panelist because I believe she's using a older version of Zoom. So Caroline, I will promote you as a panelist and then promote you back to an audience member. So.
So welcome Caroline. And if you could state your full name and your address.
My name is Caroline Elphlin. I'm one of the petitioners. I graduated Algonquin in 2018 and my address is 26 Lattisboma Road in Southborough. And I'm joined with another petitioner.
Hi, I'm Paige Morse. I'm one of the petitioners as well, graduated Algonquin in 2018. My pronouns are she, her, hers, and my address is 2 Stockwell Lane, Southborough. My pronouns are she, her as well. Thank you. I just want to begin by rebutting the notion that we are ignorant or uneducated. We were actually educated at Algonquin. And something I want to bring up is the speed at which other schools in Massachusetts have gone through this process, specifically Neshoba and Winchester. It didn't take a six-month study group. And I also want to point out kind of what we've been doing over the summer with Superintendent Morrow and other members of the board is essentially a study group. We've had lengthy discussions about the matter. So I'm just, I guess I'm curious, what would be further studied that we haven't already discussed? And what study does Algonquin require that other schools were able to do without, they were able to just kind of cut to the right answer? So, yeah. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you very much, ladies. Thank you so much.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, great, thank you. So my name is Allison Zianobos. I, my address is 1 Birchwood Drive, Southborough. I'm also a graduate of Algonquin, class of 2018. And I would first like to acknowledge that the land we're on now is, if you're in Worcester County or in the central Massachusetts area, is, belongs to Nipmuck Nation. I'm also here to comment about the study group. I don't, I'm kind of confused about its necessity. As Caroline mentioned, Winchester, Neshoba, and Grafton were all able to do this about a lengthy study group. Seems like a delay tactic, but the, I am a little concerned about the lack of native representation on this, in the study group itself. I, I think it's vital to have an indigenous person be representative at some, you know, it's about them, it's not about us. So I think it's important that a local native activist, specifically an enrolled member of Nipmuck Nation, be a member of the study group. And I also just want to make a comment regarding the intent. There's this thing called like intent versus impact that I learned about recently and I think it's really important. So not necessarily, we don't always intend to do things that hurt other people's feelings. But we, the impact is what matters. Who it's harming, how it's harming people. And I think that's, I think that's vital here. We never intend, you know, to step on someone's foot, as an example, like, but you're still feel bad, you still feel sorry because you hurt them. And that's, that's the impact that it has. And so, thank you very much for your time. And it's also nice to see a lot of people that have known me since I was young, so.
Thank you, Allison.
Joan, I believe that is the three members in the audience who had their hands raised.
Okay, thank you. And we do have our regular audience sharing. So if we do miss somebody, we can capture them at the end. Okay? Going on now back to our agenda and I'd like to thank the board members for the excellent conversation on that. And also Paul, thank you for bringing that to my attention about the audience members. We don't want those voices not to be heard. So thank you. Now we go on to Superintendent's report to the committee. And we have done the Principal's report. So Greg, I turn this over to you with enrollments.
Sure. So as you know, our October 1 enrollments are very important as they are the budget drivers for our Chapter 70 funding. So when we look at our enrollment from projected to actual, you know, we did see a decrease. We did see 78% of the Southborough 8th graders enroll in 9th grade at Algonquin, which typically we see anywhere between 12 to 15% numbers in terms of shifting to another school, another district. So it was much higher than we anticipated. And then for Northborough, it was 99.5%. I'll share that the enrollment percentage is based on our regional agreement. We had projected the enrollment percentages to be 63.58% for Northborough and 36.42% for Southborough. So not a significant difference from what our projections were. And we are working very closely with our town administrators, both in Northborough and Southborough around enrollment numbers. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
And Greg, when I went, I have just one comment. When I went back to last year's numbers FY '21, it seems that we're not off that much, there's not that much of a difference between last year and this year. And when I compared the two, it looked like Northborough from '21, from FY '21 to FY '22 increased by .46, .46%, and Southborough decreased negative .43%, which is less than 1% in both areas. So I hope that I did that okay. I mean, when I, when I went back to look at it. So, but then we do have that assessment, those are not the assessment numbers because we have to go through that assessment, you know, formula, not the assessment, but the, yeah, it is the assessment to each town.
So I think we were, we were predicting that this year FY '22, the enrollment percentages would be highest for Northborough than we've seen in terms of the past 15 years of data. And then in FY '20 through FY '26, they would start to balance out a bit. So again, this was a trend we were expecting and so it's not, it's not new information. It is what was projected.
Okay, thank you. Okay, the next item, did we, let me see, any comments from board members? Okay, going on to the next item is FY '21 Monthly General Fund Expenditure Report, COVID-19 Financial Impact on FY '21.
So we'll turn it over to Becky Pelagre. And I just want to thank the finance team. We are monitoring our FY '21 budget very closely as there are, you know, unique circumstances with a pandemic. And I will ask Becky to give a brief summary of the FY '21 expenditure report and also what we're seeing for expenses as a result of the pandemic at this point in time.
And Greg, do you want to make me the co-host so that I can share my screen?
You are now the co-host.
Oh, thank you so much. First of all, I, good evening, everyone. And I want to apologize, as soon as Greg started talking about enrollments, my, I got a unstable internet connection. So it figures, I've lasted three hours without that notice. And it's my turn. So in any case, as of September 30th, we had 1,618,000 or 6.71% remaining on the bottom line. In comparison to where we were last year, we had 1,093,751 or 4.6% remaining on the bottom line. This year with all the moving pieces, we're continuing to review line items and we're also making adjustments from the operational budget and moving those expenditures when appropriate onto the COVID-19 grants that we've received to date.
Hey Becky, just to interrupt, I don't think we see your screen yet. I believe you're reading off a slide, but we can't see that yet.
Yep, no, I haven't shared it yet. Thank you, Kiko. Okay, so this, what I'd like to present with to you tonight is, oh, and I'm sharing and I'm not presenting, is the financial impact that we are seeing right now for COVID-19. So there are three grants that we've talked about over the past few months. And I'm pleased to report that at the end of September, actually September 25th, we received official notification from DESI that we have been approved for the CVRF School Reopening Grant. That is the largest of the three grants that we have received. That's the 225 per student and it represents $314,125. With the CVRF grant as well as the Remote Learning Technology Grant, we have until the end of December to expend those funds. The USR grant, we have until FY '22 to expend that, that grant received. The next slide that I want to share with you is one that you've seen before, however, it is modified. So we've taken those expenses that we had anticipated would be most impacted by the reopening, by school reopening in a COVID environment. And I've created a column that will show you what our FY '21 budget was for that particular line item. Then I've also included a column where we have those annual projections that we have been talking about and the difference between those two items, between the budgeted amount and then what we're projecting. And then I've also included all the grant funds that we've received and how those will be broken down based on those line items. You'll notice that the grant funds do not total the exact amount that was on that previous slide. And that's because we have a few line items that were included in the grant that were smaller for advertising, for some other additional purchases that did not rise to the level of being on this expense report. And then lastly, I've also included what we've actually spent year-to-date. And this is as of October 13th. You'll notice that those expenses right now are on the smaller side because we have just really started to reopen school. The two largest categories were obviously the PPE and then the facility and cleaning supplies because those were items that were needed in order to begin the school year. However, I do anticipate seeing like our substitute line items in both teachers and nurses increasing as we go through the next few months. We've also been working closely with technology to make purchases based on this grant and provide those devices that students do need while they are in either remote or in a hybrid setting. So at this point in time, the grants, we have really been strategic when we applied for that in terms of making sure that the grant would be focused on those line items where we were most concerned. And so you can see right now, I'm projecting about a $7,000 shortfall. And so that is positive news. However, that does not take into consideration if we need to purchase, which we will, additional PPE or facility cleaning supplies that we're unaware of. So at this point, if anyone has any questions? Rebecca?
Yes.
Whoa, there's an echo. I have one question. Amy Collins talked about special covers or something for the instruments that they would need because of COVID. Is, can that be covered under any grant?
We are actually purchasing those items under the School Reopening Grant.
Okay, thank you. Paul Bucka?
Thanks, Becky, for the update. Thank you, Joan. So I'm, I'm curious about the teacher substitute and additional staff line, Becky, if I could. So we've only spent six grand in one month of school at this point in time and, which I think is terrific and I think says an awful lot to how well the facilities folks have kind of taken care of the building and made our staff feel more comfortable showing up for work every day. But looking at your spreadsheet, you know, you've got the 336 grand in, in grant funds listed there. The vast majority of those funds need to be spent by December 31st. So you've got 159,000 earmarks for subs. I mean, at this rate, you're not going to spend 159,000 by December 30th by a long shot. So what is it, I mean, how easy is it for, can we redeploy these? Is this just our money and as long as we spend it, we're okay?
So a couple, a couple of items. So with the teacher substitutes, so while we've been in session for three weeks, our pay schedule for substitutes is actually two weeks behind a normal payroll. So this would really only reflect potentially one week of substitutes. So, so that's just one part to clarify that. So we, I do anticipate seeing that go up. However, if we are and we're constantly monitoring this, actually, my team and I are sitting down on Friday just to, to see where we stand following the payroll that's going to be processed this week. And if there is a need to make any sort of amendment, we do have that ability to do that through the DESI system. So if we're identifying, okay, instead of the substitutes, you know, we need to purchase additional- So if we're identifying, okay, instead of the substitutes, you know, we need to purchase additional technology or we need to, you know, move it into some sort of cleaning, you know, personnel. We make that arrangement. We just need to submit that to DSE for approval.
Okay, and, and then just a, a final one on the, the technology line. I mean, you've got, it appears to me you're saying we've got a lot more money than we need. I, I guarantee you that someone in the administration somewhere that would tell you that there's got to be a good solid use for that eighty nine thousand dollars.
Yeah, so the technology is a little, a little deceiving only because with this grant, we can't purchase any sort of licenses or any sort of subscriptions. So what we anticipate doing is redeploying any of our operational budget money towards those sorts of purchases that the technology team has identified. But for the grant purposes, we can't because it ends on December thirtieth. We can't pay for something that lasts an entire year.
Okay, I think we've talked about that before.
Yes, yep.
Thanks, Beck.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for the great overview every month that you give to this on the COVID nineteen financial impact. I think I, I went a little bit too fast because we quickly went over the monthly general fund expenditure report that needs to have a vote. Is there anything there that we should be looking at and be concerned about?
The areas that I'm really paying close attention to are in our facilities. Keith and I are, are working closely with Mike Gorman at the high school. Just making sure that we're, we're keeping, you know, in, in touch with him, that we're monitoring our HVAC systems, that we are looking at any of our cleaning protocols and looking at our, our, what we're purchasing. That's probably the area that I'm most closely watching right now. The, actually, in the second area would probably be our cafeteria as well, our food service. That is one where the state has now been approved, where everyone is, receives free lunch in all three districts. And so we are kind of making that switch to a new cafeteria model. And so we've had, I think, three weeks right now of data. And I know Diane is doing a great job at the high school trying to increase our enrollments. But obviously, the more that students eat, the more we receive in reimbursement or the number of students that eat increases our reimbursement from the state. And so we're trying to monitor that. So that's another area that we are closely watching.
So Becky, are you saying that if a student is in line on a hybrid day and they want to come through, and they come through the cafeteria line, they get a free lunch, they don't have to pay anything?
That's correct. And what Keith and his team are doing is on Mondays, they're providing lunch. I believe it's three lunches on Monday that will cover those hybrid students for the days that they are not in school. And then they also have the ability to obtain a free lunch on the days that they are in school.
Okay, and Becky, what happens if we have growing young adults and sometimes the kids want, need, they may want an extra sandwich or something. Can they come back for an extra lunch if they need, if they need it and so desire?
They, they can, but that second lunch is not reimbursable. So the, that child will be charged for the second lunch.
Okay, thank you.
And Diane is also adding à la carte items, which are our favorite at the high school, whether it's the chocolate chip cookies or other things that are available for purchase as well. Not in the first week. We've held off on that because we're really fine tuning the protocols. But now that we're into a swing, she's going to be adding in those à la carte items within the next week or so.
And I would say those cookies are probably what drives her budget.
I would agree.
Chocolate chip morsels will get you all the time. All right, thank you. And I look forward to an update on this as we go forward, especially since it's free, the free lunches. I'd like to get more, you know, in depth on this as we go forward. Okay, thank you.
A quick question.
Oh, question, go ahead, Sean.
I think the state is also providing a free breakfast is a, a program. Is Algonquin going to do that? I don't know if students get there early enough for it, though.
We, Diane and I, or Diane, more than me, completed the paperwork for that. And we are implementing that now that that adjustment has been made. So there, there are steps we have to take, but Diane is making preparations for that as we unfold. And, you know, she has been in session for ten days, as Sean mentioned earlier. So we are really in the infancy of the food services program. And we're hoping to really increase participation in the next few weeks.
Okay, thank you.
Welcome.
Thanks, Sean. Thanks for that information. Okay, at this time, we need to have a vote for the FY twenty one month, monthly expenditures. Okay, motion is made by Paul Bucka to accept the FY twenty one monthly expenditures until audited. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Chris Covino. Roll call vote, Karen Ayers?
Yes.
Paul Bucka?
Yes.
Chris Covino?
Yes.
Paul Desmond?
Yes.
Kathleen Highland?
Yes.
Kathy Key?
Yes.
Dan Kalenda?
Yes.
Sean O'Shea?
Yes.
Kathleen Polczko?
Yes.
And John Frank, yes, it passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Next item that we have on our agenda is FY twenty one statement of revenue.
Again, I will have Becky share the update on the revenue report.
So as you can see on the enclosed, or I guess the projected revenue report, we did receive our first quarter assessments from both towns. And as Greg mentioned earlier, the governor did release his second version of the FY twenty one budget last week. And as was communicated back in July, our chapter seventy funding did remain level funded from FY twenty. And so that number that we had projected is actually a good number as that is what has been projected from the governor. We have yet to receive any more information on our transportation, our regional transportation reimbursement. And we also last week did learn our circuit breaker figure for FY twenty one. And that number is four hundred and six thousand seven hundred and twenty three. So that did not make this, this report because this was as of September thirtieth, and we just received that on Friday. I will tell you, there was a conference call today and they actually, instead of reimbursing at seventy five percent, they reimbursed at seventy percent. And they also increased the foundation level or threshold where a student would be eligible for the circuit breaker reimbursement. So that is one reason why there was a decrease in the circuit breaker reimbursement.
Any questions or comments for Becky? Okay, there aren't any at this time. I would like to entertain a motion to, any take a vote to accept the FY twenty one.
Revenue until it's audited?
Okay, motion made by Paul Bucka, second?
I'll second Chris.
Chris, thank you. Second by Chris. Any other further discussion? Since the roll call vote, Karen Ayers?
Yes.
Paul Bucka? Chris Covino?
Yes.
Paul Desmond?
Yes.
Kathleen Highland?
Yes.
Kathy Key?
Yes.
Dan Kalenda?
Yes.
Sean, Sean O'Shea?
Yes.
Kathleen Polczko?
Yes.
And myself, yes, it passes unanimously. Thank you. Going on to the next one is review of capital plan.
So just a quick update. Keith, avoid, Mike Gorman and I will be sitting down and reviewing the capital plan project and updating it accordingly in preparation for the capital planning subcommittee. And I believe Cheryl sent out a doodle poll. So for the, for our next meeting. Again, so Keith and Mike Gorman are reviewing this document and will provide a more detail to the subcommittee at its next meeting.
And I think we just got notification from Cheryl today. It would be November the tenth. And that'll be from five to six PM. And the members on that capital plan are Kathleen Polczko, Chris Covino and myself. And of course, any one member can attend as a participant and as, and like an audience member, but they still have a say. Correct, Greg?
That is accurate.
Okay, so you can always zoom in if you'd like. Okay, next we have is FY twenty two budget priorities. It's a review and a vote.
So we had a special school committee meeting, seems a week, a week and a half ago to kind of review the budget priorities, looking at the new lens of our vision twenty twenty six strategic plan. So what you have on the screen this evening is the updated budget priorities that the special meeting drafted for further review this evening.
Paul Bucka?
So thanks, Joan. So just to share with the, the committee members who weren't at the operational subcommittee meeting, what we talked about, the, the top bullet here and the, and the last bullet, prioritizing all the spending required to deal with the COVID nineteen pandemic and fund the school committee approved initiatives recommended by the Coalition for Equity are two new items that we very specifically added for this coming year. We, we don't necessarily think that they're going to have, we, we hope they won't have a lot of legs that, you know, they'll just be here for a, a year, you know. You know, God help us, no more than two relative to the pandemic. And, and what we really felt, we wanted to demonstrate our commitment to both of those two items going into this upcoming budget year. And I think our, our hope for the group is that the committee as a whole will agree with us and that, you know, that those additional priorities, albeit short term relative to the others, are, are two that you would also support adding to the list.
Any other comments or questions from board members? Saying that we, at this time, we should take a vote to to enact these budget priorities so that it would be the direction given to Mr. Bevan and the department chairs and to Greg into working on the FY twenty two budget. Dan Kalenda?
I actually did have a question. And I wasn't on the last one. So Paul, could you help me out a little bit about the first one and the last one again? So the first one seems very broad. So I don't really know what it means to, about, and I'm trying to read it, but prioritize socially, emotional and physical well-being of, of students and staff. I mean, can you, can you give me a little something about what that means? I mean, that doesn't say, that doesn't say anything or it could say everything. And I don't know where that goes. So what does that mean in terms of budget priority?
So, you know.
Yeah, all right.
Mostly, we just talked about, you know, with the pandemic, you know, it's, it's predictable that we're going to be spending a lot of money in areas that we don't normally spend. Or that we're going to be spending levels that we don't normally spend at. So that when, when the public or, or any committee members see a, a line item on a budget that was never there before and has some significant funding to it, or they see a line item on the budget that, that a lot of money to it and it is a double or triple digit increase over the amount of money we have spent in years past. You know, should we, you know, should we not kind of empower everyone who's responsible for creating the budget to understand that we will fully support them in their need to kind of identify spending requirements to deal with the pandemic and its impact on our students and our staff and the administration? And kind of a, okay, well, how do you say that? And, and, you know, the, the, the better wordsmith is in the group than me. I mean, I just, I just want to make sure the money's there. You know me, I, I, you know, it's, but the, the wordsmith is in the group came up with this phrase. But mostly, it's just, the pandemic is going to cost us money. There's no doubt about it. It's going to cost us money. We've never spent before. It's costing us that kind of money now. And as we prepare next year's budget, we fully anticipate it's going to cost that money again, maybe even more. And we wanted the people putting the budget together to understand that the committee is going to support. In terms of our last bullet.
And then, and just on, just on, if I may on that, and then I do have a question on the last one. But so prioritizing socially, emotional and physical well-being. I, I guess I understand the part about prioritize, you know, funding required to respond to, you know, the COVID nineteen pandemic. But I guess I, there was, must have been a reason why those particular items were chosen. And I don't know if you have examples of that or estimates of that, or I mean, where are we kind of going with that? So, so we and then the public have an understanding of what we're being asked to prioritize as a, as a, an expenditure of their tax dollars this year.
Well, so we're only a month into kind of dealing with the kids back in the building for, so to give you concrete examples would be, would be nothing but supposition. But, you know, here's an example. Let's, let's assume as time passes, the air circulation testing that we do, you know, comes up with, with numbers that we don't find acceptable once we turn the heat on. And, you know, there's money that needs to be spent in areas that we had not anticipated because not circulating air properly could affect the physical health of the people that are in the building. But, but we don't really know. You know, the, the social and emotional side is more just like, how can we make sure that kind of being in the building isn't a stressful situation for the students, the educators, the administrators, the maintenance folks and anyone else who has to walk through the doors? And if there's money to be spent there to kind of alleviate that stress, you know, we wanted to, you know, just empower the, the folks who are putting the budget together to kind of understand that they had our support there. I don't know that we're letting it willy nilly, but we didn't want them to, to not know we weren't, we weren't going to be supportive of their request.
Right. I mean, and then, and then we, we also, of course, have the stress of so many students not being in the building. And how are we going to pay for, you know, their emotional and social well-being when they're not in the building and that's, their, their stress levels are high because they're not around their fellow students or their, their teachers and they're apprehensive about, you know, what they may be learning in a remote environment as opposed to an in-person environment. They're, you know, kids that are getting ready for college, not thinking they're not as well prepared because that, I mean, because they're not in, in-person learning. So the stresses, I think, in the emotional side of it can't be solely related to those in school. It has to be, I mean, the majority of time is spent out of school. So I guess I'm, I'm just, and I know we're only a, a short period of time into it, but I think we owe it to, i- if we're going to choose these words, we owe it to the public to at least have some idea of what we're talking about in terms of potential spend on, you know, surely the physical well-being is there. But I don't know which, I don't know what yet, I don't know yet what is meant by social and emotional, where that goes for each, you know, there's fifteen hundred individuals here. So, you know, how do we, how do we grasp that for? And then, you know, staff included, how do we, how do you come up with what that priority is for their social and emotional well-being?
And, and I would agree with you, Dan, but I don't think we know those answers. And I don't know that it's limiting to just in-building issues. If there are technologies that we could invest in that make at-home remote learning more productive, less stressful, you know, choose, choose your words, then, you know, I think we'd be, we'd be open to listening. You know, I don't know that when, I mean, this isn't a blind check on anything. As much as it's a, you know, a kind of a raising our hand, stepping up to the line and saying, we know there's things that you're going to spend differently than you have in years past. And we're supportive of, of, you know, your, your, at least requesting that, that that money be spent if you can justify it to us in, in ways that makes some sense.
Right. I, I guess I would have started, I would have had prioritize the well-being of students. I think once we start down the path of social, emotional in particular, that I'm not exactly sure parents think that is going to mean. Does that mean that, you know, Johnny or, or Alice is, you know, we, they can request money for their own individual students' emotional challenges associated with the, the pandemic because they're not in school or they have to go in school and wear a mask? I mean, I guess there, there must have been a reason why those were chosen.
Can I, can I make a?
Can, can we get some other members chiming in here?
Yes, definitely. All right. So I have Paul Bucka, I know you. Yes, definitely. Alright, so I have Paul Bucka, I know you, you had the dialogue going. Do you, your hand was raised. Do you have something you wanna add?
No, I'm done.
Okay, I had Karen Ayers, then Paul Desmond, and then Shauna Shay.
Okay, I just wanted to make, I was not there for that meeting, so this all looks great. And I just wanted to kind of come back to the point that we were just talking about with Mass Core, that it really, if we do, you know, continue to study that and and look into what other can be enhanced, it really does go well with some of these, this priority, which is prepare all students for high, high levels of success in college and career readiness. So I think that's great. So I just wanted to kind of point that out.
Thanks, Karen. Paul Desmond?
Yeah, I also wanted to point out, if you look at the bullets below one through five, I mean, I, as I remember the meeting where we came up with this, the idea was to to make sure these priorities match those of the strategic plan that we just came out with. And Dan, if you see number three, it's word for word, plus we just added, you know, requirements related to COVID. So, yeah, I would agree. It's broad and I think that was intentional.
Okay, thanks, Paul. Shauna Shay?
I I think, you know, from time to time in education, new lingo comes into the vernacular and and it's not always explained. Social, emotional learning, I'm not sure we as a committee have had, and I may be wrong, like a, that is, it it is a catchphrase for a lot of things right now coming from Castle, and it has to do with decreasing like anxiety and and things like that within embedded teaching. So I I wonder if at some point it would be helpful to have a short, I hate to add to an agenda somewhere, but you know, something to explain to the committee about the new pushes from the state about so-called social, emotional learning or SEL in kind of the Castle frameworks. Am I wrong that I don't think we've had a presentation on that?
Not that I can remember.
I I think that would be because as Dan's explaining, where where does this go? What does it lead to? But I think that, I think it, seeing it in here and knowing it it's a new vernacular, it's a new catchphrase in education, and I think it refers to a specific thing, but it could be read many different ways without knowing some of that background. So maybe at another time, it'd be nice to have a short, concise presentation on that.
Yeah, thanks, Sean. I I just was putting that on my notes here for agenda items for next month or months. So I think we will address that. Thank you for that. Okay, and I I think this has been a great dialogue and communication and the questions for the members that were not there and the members that were there to respond. I did like what Paul Desmond did bring up that if you look underneath the bullets, we have one through five, and those were taken directly from the strategic plan. And we would, you know, at that meeting, we said that we would like to make our budget priorities to support the strategic plan and their initiatives that that was agreed upon and voted in. So I think this would be good to have more discussion on. And I think is is the Castle framework as Shauna Shay spoke on. So is there any other discussion or entertaining a motion to accept these budget priorities?
Madam Chair, I think Paul was gonna try and help me understand the last one too, though.
Okay, for fund the school committee approved initiatives recommended by the Coalition for Equity? That one?
That one, yeah. So, and so it's just kind of the same, same sort of conversation. We don't really know what that is, but we are aware that Coalition for Equity is working on some, you know, pretty important discussions and initiatives, and it's likely that maybe some of them, you know, you know, an easy example would be changing the, changing the mascot. You know, may cost us some money and we didn't want to, you know, have someone, some, some bean counter, including maybe me, you know, walking into a room later and saying, well, these are all terrific ideas, but where's the money in the budget to cover any of it? And and we just kind of wanted to make sure that there was some kind of willingness on the part of of the committee to recognize that the Coalition for Equity may in fact ask us to spend a few dollars on correcting some things that they that they discover and discuss. And, you know, we should not, we cannot kind of take away their ability to ask for that by hiding behind the fact that we don't have any money earmarked in the budget for.
Paul, Paul, as part of that, can you identify the amount of money that was earmarked in the budget for bullets one and five, so that the public knows and, of course, we know?
We're talking about next year's budget, Dan. The budget's not even, not even close to written yet.
Right, but we're, but you're you're telling me right now that that money's been allocated. I mean, it hasn't yet, but that there's gonna be money in the budget for these things. We should under, we should at least have a a general understanding of what that might be. Is it a thousand dollars? Is it a million dollars? I mean, you know, what is it? If we're gonna have it as a budget priority, we should have something to back it up.
We don't have it yet. The budget's not created yet. And when it is.
Could I chime in?
Go ahead, Paul.
I think the key word there is fund school committee approved initiatives. So anything we're gonna fund is approved by the school committee. And by that time, we're gonna know how much it costs.
And we have never placed money on any of these budget priorities in the past. This is just the framework to give, you know, the department chairs and Mr. Sean Bevan a direction to go. And we've, I've never have put a money dollar on, and we don't know. And these budget things are gonna be coming back to us in operational budget and in in sharing with the committee members. So it is, and this is gonna be, as we all know, this is a hard year going ahead. It was a hard year this year. It's gonna be harder next year, and we we cannot put dollar amounts to them right now.
Yeah, no, thank you, Joan. I appreciate everyone's comments on that. And and while I may not be able to support it yet based on this, I mean, Paul and Paul, your comments are well-taken, yours too, Joan. We just haven't really changed these in the years that I've been on the committee in any measurable way. So that's why I was trying to be a little bit more inquisitive as to, you know, what's behind it. So, thank you all.
That's all right. Questions make us to be great thinkers, so no problem with that. Paul Desmond, I see your hand up. Do you have a comment?
No, just forgot to take it down, although at this point, I I move that we approve the fiscal twenty twenty-two budget priorities as presented.
Okay.
Second, Sean.
Sean, so a motion, motion's been made by Paul Desmond and seconded by Shauna Shay. Is there any other further discussion? We'll call a vote. Karen Ayers?
Yes.
Paul Bucka?
Yes.
Chris Covino?
Madam Chair, actually, before we continue, I just did have one question I was trying to pop in there. Right above the section where it says, for the purposes of clarity, the major initiatives for funding include, it's in parentheses, it says introductory strategic plan paragraph. Was there an intention to put a paragraph in place there before we vote on this?
Greg, you would probably have that, or Dr. Ryan Horn?
Yeah, I just want to, I think that thought was that we would add the five strategic objectives. And I I do believe we said we would add a introductory strategic plan paragraph, so it provides some context. But that is independent from the budget priorities established.
All right, then I I vote yes to approve, yes.
Thanks, Chris. Paul Desmond?
Yes.
Kathleen Holland?
Yes.
Kathy Ke?
Sorry, yeah, yes.
Dan Kalenda?
No.
Shauna Shay?
Yes.
Kathleen Polacko?
Yes.
And John Frank, yes. And it passes in the majority, it passes nine to one. Thank you, everybody. Okay, so we have our budget priorities. Next, we have on our agenda is old business, elevator repair update.
So this is.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I missed one. FY twenty-two budget calendar, budget process.
So in in your packet is the of the the budget calendar and the meetings that we've held thus far. So this will be a very interesting budget year in regards of, we still don't have an FY twenty-one state budget yet. And I don't anticipate that FY twenty-two budget numbers will be available anytime soon. So I think looking at historical data, having many meetings and working very closely with our towns is going to be more important than ever. And as new information is available to us, we will share that with the committee.
Okay, thank you. That takes care of also the budget process, Greg?
Yeah, I mean, I think the budget process, we are maintaining the the typical budget process. Becky and the financial team have launched the FY twenty-two budget work and have given Principal Bevan and department chairs information they need. And now the next major milestone is to receive that data back from the department chairs and Principal Bevan and start synthesizing it and seeing where the budgets stand. So the budget process is in works and more information as we move forward.
Okay, thank you. Now going on to old business, the elevator repair update. Greg?
I will have Keith Boy provide an uplifting report on the elevator repair project.
Yes, Greg, it is certainly uplifting. I don't know if the committee remembers this, but we've, we've had a lot going on in the last few months, but just prior to our closure in February of two thousand and twenty, the H-Wing elevator was was down for some time due to an electrical issue that was was created, which we believe through some transient voltage, which is basically electrical currents made their way down the elevator shaft and disrupted the mechanics of the of the system. After that point, we had the elevator assessed for what it was gonna take to get it back online. And through some very difficult conversations, and Becky will attest to this, we, we didn't, we were not quite sure what we had at first. But fortunately, through Mike Gorman's perseverance and really diligence throughout the entire matter, we were able to not only get the elevator fully repaired, we were able to have our insurance company cover the cost minus the deductible. So right up until the end of or the beginning of school, I can report that on September twenty-ninth, the elevator was approved for operation and was ready to go for the first day of school. And the image you see here on your screen is the damage that was created by, which is, which I can best describe as an electrical surge through transient voltage, which just did disrupt the shaft as well as the other mechanics that are part of it. So now the picture is squeaky clean. There is a a new sleeve which will now prevent transient voltage from occurring, which is made of PVC. And then the other components, the jack as well as the piston itself were replaced. So it is operational. We are at a hundred percent, and you would never know there was ever an issue in the elevator shaft.
Fantastic. So that project was going, the repair was gonna cost seventy-five thousand dollars?
That's correct.
And then we only had to pay the deductible of two thousand five hundred?
That is correct.
Fantastic. Please thank Mike for his diligence, as you said, in the, in the, in your write-up. And also thank you very much for all your expertise on this. This is, this is uplifting news and good news at this time.
Yes, it is. Definitely is.
Okay, seeing that there aren't any questions or comments from board members, we'll go on to the next agenda item, and it is update on subcommittee assignments. And that one is just in your packet, I think from the September meeting. Chris Covino was added on to the audit subcommittee, so I just wanted to make sure that that was on everyone, so they can make a copy of this if they would like, and they will know who is serving on what committees. And if anything changes, just please let me know and we'll make those changes when necessary. Next one is policy development and distribution. And this is just distribution. It is the, for your, it is on the website and it is for you, for you to, if you wanna make a copy, put in your packet. It is the new face covering policy A one seventy and the new gen- general interim policy on COVID-related issues. And it's a new numbering system because it's an interim, which is interim zero zero one. Okay? Anything else, Greg, on that?
No, I'll be excited when we no longer need an interim policy for COVID-related issues.
That's correct. And at this time, we'll go out to our audience. Do we have any audience members that would like to share? Do you see any, Greg?
I do not, Joan. There are no hands raised.
Okay. Are there any administrators that have anything that they would like to share?
Keith, can I share something?
Sure, can Kathy?
So last, I think it was last year, do you remember the Best Buddies group that came and sang to us during our school committee meeting? Annalise, I don't know if her mom is Lori Diamond. And during quarantine, she sings with her mom and dad. And they posted on YouTube and it's called Quarantine Sessions. So if any of you can find her and listen to it, it'll bring the biggest smile to your face. It's just such a, like a nice, like uplifting thing to watch. And the smile on Annalise's face is just, it's so wonderful to see. So just wanted to throw that out there.
I agree with you, Kathy. They're beautiful and very, very uplifting, even more than an elevator, perhaps.
And by the way, Keith, like most of my kids' money spent on extra things at the high school were on chocolate chip cookies.
Kathy, can you tell us what is the name again of the student to research?
So, so her mom is Lori Diamond. You can follow her on Facebook. And if you can find Quarantine Sessions on YouTube, that's where I think she posted. I can send, I'll send some, a link to you, Joan, and you can send it out. It's just a really neat thing to listen to.
That's good. Why don't you just send it out to all the members? I think everybody would love to see it. Or just send it to me and I can forward it, okay? But thank you. That's a great share. Yeah, are there any other board members wish sharing? Okay, I just have two quick ones. The policy subcommittee, we met on October fifteenth, and that was just for the annual policy review. And last week, I attended the second meeting of the Northboro Ed Foundation. And as most of you know, when the opening day of Algonquin, this Sunday, the day before, the Northboro Ed Foundation moms and their children came out and put the pinwheels all around to welcome back the students and the faculty, and they raised seventeen thousand dollars on that. And so what they have decided to do is, as they did in August, they had a short window for a grant timeline. And in August, we had, there were four grants given to Algonquin Regional High School. And so now they have, they're doing another one, and it concludes on October twenty-eighth. And they're gonna do a decision on November the second. So the teachers can do another one because they figured they've been in school for a couple of weeks and maybe there is things that they need or they saw a teacher that they got a grant for or they need more of. So I just want to say that the teachers, there's a new grant timeline, and you can submit them to the NEF by October, concludes on October twenty-eighth. Okay, going on to personnel, Greg?
So in the packet is your personnel report, so just a few changes to note. Heather, are there any comments around this report that you'd like to share?
Sure. I think you'll see there are very few staffing changes on this report. There is one staffing change that I do want to make note of. And Susan Whalen is, has decided to retire in December after being with us for about fifteen years in in different roles. So we just wanna congratulate Sue Whalen on her upcoming retirement and thank her for her years of service.
I'll just, I'll just add to that comment to Heather that Susan was going to retire in August. But it was, can her to stay on through through December, so we're great, we're very appreciative of her efforts and her work through a very difficult time.
And and just adding on to that, since we're talking about staffing and right now, I'd like to share that we are actively recruiting and interviewing substitutes for the district right now. We talked about substitute costs a little bit earlier. But we anticipate a high need for substitutes, given, given the upcoming cold and flu season and we anticipate a high need for substitutes, given, uh, given the upcoming cold and flu season and, um, possible symptoms of COVID. So, um, if anybody knows of anybody who is interested in becoming a substitute with us or, um, knows of any college students who may be on break, who would be interested in substituting, please, um, have them reach out to me, have them apply online. All of our, um, all of our positions are posted on our website.
Heather, I have a question. If they are a college student, what year do they have to be in, or is it so many semesters completed?
Um, it, it depends. We are, we are looking for high school graduates, um, but it would be ideal to have somebody who have, uh, somebody who has at least a year of college, um, achieved.
Okay, thank you very much.
Madam Chair, can I just ask?
Sure, Sean.
Sure. Uh, uh, do you have substitutes right now, Heather?
So we do have some building-based substitutes-
Okay.
-who we have hired, um, on a regular basis. Um, but I, I do want to share that our daily substitute list is, um, is, uh, dwindling.
Yes.
Uh, and, and so we are really trying different and unique avenues for recruitment and to try to spread the word
Yeah.
that we're looking for substitutes. You, you may see flyers at Whole Foods um, and, and different places.
I, I think it's great that you have at least three building-based. I, I literally have one for my entire building, maybe, and that's not building-based. So to have three to start with is good.
Yeah, and, and-
But never enough.
Right, and the substitute shortage is not unique to us. This is something that districts are feeling all over, um, all over the state and all over the country right now.
Well, hopefully, uh, you, you know, this is a great avenue, because I know there's so many people that watch it, our meetings, and maybe they'll know people that can, you know, apply and contact you at central office at near you school, Heather. So cross our fingers, but I know it's gonna be a tough time going ahead. But as Sean said, I am glad to see that you instituted, along with that Greg instituted, the three, the three substitutes that are permanently in the district in e- each building. So I'd like to thank you for that initiative. Okay, going on to the next, we have communications, and under the first one is notification to a Butters, which was in your packet. And, uh, the one that was in your, Greg, did you want to talk about that one?
No, so this was a notification of, uh, to a Butters that we received, um, in January of, uh, two thousand and twenty. Um, it did go to the high school and was never sent to the central office. Um, so we did track that down. So we did, we do have a new procedure when there is, um, a notice to a Butters that it does make its way to the central office, so that we can distribute it to the committee. Um, and the nice thing is that the new process is working, because we did receive a public hearing notice, um, for the Northborough zoning, a Board of Appeals, that did make its way to central office and distributed in your packet.
And then there was also one in the pa, packet about, uh, the Zero Bartlett Street Distribution Center, and I'd just like to report that, uh, the planning board last night, uh, October twentieth, they were holding the continuation of the public hearing, which went over three meetings. And at the conclusion of the public hearing, they voted down, uh, the proposal to build a distribution center at Zero Bartlett Street. So that's all the news that I have on that. And then we have, uh, payroll of bills and, uh, approval of bills and payroll. We can't say we're passing them around the table, but we do have people, um, the school community members that are on that to get those signed. And, uh, we have agenda items for next month. Uh, so far is Metro West survey results, food services update, Coalition for Equity, study group on mascot review, M A S C, M A S joint conference update, and on the resolutions, we look forward hearing back from Kathy Holland on that, and capital planning subcommittee update. And then I also added what Sean mentioned, to explain, uh, the new process on the social, emotional, and the Castle frameworks. Are there any other agenda items that you would like to see on for next month or the following month? Okay. Seeing that there is none, and that is the end of the items that are listed on our agenda. Greg, is there any other business that needs to come legally before the committee at this time?
Uh, no, there is not.
Good, and we got, we have fifteen minutes to spare, so does anybody else have anything like, that they would like to discuss? Other than a motion to adjourn?
I'll discuss a motion to adjourn.
Okay.
So moved, so moved.
Thank you, Paul Desmond. Is there a second?
Very good.
Yeah, second by Paul Bucka. Okay, this is, any further discussion on the motion? Um, I'd just like to thank everybody for the great meeting. We did have a, a very full agenda, we got it done, great discussion, good questions, which allows us to really think really hard about things. And thank you for everybody who has taken a leadership position, because there have been so many subcommittees and study groups, uh, delegates. Thank you, everybody, for being a leader in all of this. It's, it's a great assistance. So to adjourn the meeting at ten forty-five PM, roll call vote. Karen Ayers?
Yes.
Paul Bucka?
Yes.
Chris Covino?
Yes.
Paul Desmond? Paul? Paul Desmond, do you want to adjourn?
Yes, 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 sorry.
He wants me to do him another fifteen minutes. Kathleen Holland?
Yes, please.
Kathy Key?
Yep, yes.
Dan Condon? Dan? Okay, uh, Sean O'Shea?
Yes.
Uh, Kathleen Polacko?
Yes.
And Joan Frank. It passes, uh, unanimously. Thank you much, thank you very much, everybody, and thank you to the administration. Hats off to you, and thank you, uh, Mr. Bevan for staying with us and doing all the great work, and we gave you some new projects, because you had nothing else to do.
I look forward to it.